To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, the which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and in whose name it is called.
Okay, we just came out of closed session. One A, nothing to report. Two A, update given. Three A, direction of staff. Three B, direction of staff. And confidential minutes were approved. We're now at public matters, not on the agenda, discussion times only, no action to be taken. Any person may address the board at this time upon any subject within the jurisdiction of Amador County Board of Supervisors. However, any matter requires action may refer to staff and/or committee for report and recommendation for possible action at subsequent board meeting. Please note there's a three-minute time limit. Anybody from the public? Board?
Um, yes. I'd like to talk about Mr. Roger Piddo, who was a county surveyor. He recently passed away and I always look forward to seeing Mr. Piddo. He just had a very good attitude and he's a very nice man and I will miss him. I'd like to ask, we have a moment of silence for Mr. Piddo?
Sounds good. Moment of silence, please. Thank you. Anything else from the board? Okay.
I have a couple more, actually.
Go ahead.
Sorry. We also lost Mr. Rico Aller, who was our state senator from 1996 to 2000. Actually, excuse me. I think he was a very, very good elected official. I don't think he fit in very well in Sacramento, but he tried pretty hard. Recently passed, and like a moment of silence for Mr. Aller, too, if we could. Okay?
Say with that, too, I mean, he was a very principled man. I got to spend a full day with him, just to, and others, too, but he was just a really good guy. Appreciated his attitude towards government. He was a very independent, which is, he did not get along for that reason, though he told us much when he got elected, so it's good.
Good man, didn't fit in too well in Sacramento.
Yep, that's exactly right, yep.
Okay, another moment of silence, please. Okay, thank you.
And then also, um, we got another gentleman that was assassinated recently, Mr. Charlie Kirk. All he did was say, hey, do people want to talk? And for wanting to talk and maybe solve problems, he was, he was killed. Yeah, I appreciate a moment of silence for Mr. Kirk, too.
Okay, moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I'm good.
Okay. Approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Heard Supervisor Cornell first. You're in trouble. My right ear's better, you know, so you're gonna have to really speak, you know. So, call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero. Okay, anybody want to speak about any, on the consent agenda? Anybody on Zoom?
No, not at this time.
Okay. Call for the motion?
All moved.
Do I have a sec? Second from Supervisor Neto?
Guys are slow.
Call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero. Okay, regular agenda, presentation by Amador County Veteran Service Officer Angela Shubble on the current and upcoming activities for veterans in Amador County.
Good morning.
Morning. Oh, hold on just for a sec. Okay. Now, bring the mic down to you.
How's that?
That's better.
Okay, good morning. I just wanted to bring to, bring some information to the board and to the community about what has happened this, this year. So if we could see the next picture, one of the things is our office moved to Suite 100, and that is been a great move. I have a waiting area for veterans and my own private office to take care of business. So that's been wonderful. Thursdays, we have anywhere from 10 to 19 veterans waiting, so it's been very helpful to cultivate that veteran community here in Amador County. And also, we have a parking lot that's been established specifically for veterans. I have many veterans who have ailments or injuries but don't, don't get a disabled parking pass or license plate, so this helps. It's right there in front of the building and it helps them to get into the building easier. So that's much appreciated and the, I want to thank the facilities for helping me get that done. So on to claim statistics. This information you get in your, the book that comes out by the association every year, but I just wanted to give a rundown. And so we have 2,673 veterans in Amador County. It has dropped by 100 over the year. So, we do have an aging group in this area, and so many are passing, so then therefore we're having to assist the spouses with benefits as well. So thankfully, VA has established benefits for the spouses, and that's been a blessing for many to stay in their homes. New veterans for this year, 255 new veterans into the office, that, that was a big jump. A lot of it has to do with just veterans in the area getting ready to get in and work on their benefits. So that's been great. I, I pulled a few from all over that I've worked with, so that's been good, too. My caseload is about 655 veterans at this time. That could be simple as I gotta clear out their file, or I'm working a full claim with them. So it's, it's a big span of what's entailed with that. Total claims in the office, 774. That's anywhere from a driver's license verification to a full claim, benefits for hundred percenters. So that, that's a vast rounded, there's a lot involved. Workload units, this is what gave me credit for what's coming up for the financial means from Cal Vet, they count our claims, so the workload units, 724 were credited for monies that will come through the claim process. Healthcare enrollments, 62. So the retro payments for this last year were 793,682,000. That's for, once a veteran begins a claim, there's a waiting process because that claim has to be proved. So these are the retro payments to catch up from the date a claim was submitted and/or an intent. So, but the monthly payments that come to our veterans that really make a huge difference for our community is their monthly payments, and so that was $1,744,101 that came back into our community monthly, into the pockets of our veteran. So that is, makes a world of difference for the veterans who need that, and it's a wonderful program that is there for our veterans to access for needs that they have. So there's a pension program as well as compensation for disabilities. Both are, are, I just have seen families stay together, homes maintained, and just the way of life upgraded for these veterans. And so I think it's a great thing that our government does. College fee waivers, that was a savings, so these veterans who have, if they have a 0% rating, their students in California can go to college. And so that's a savings of $116,000 overall with the college fee waivers that I established this year. This is just a rundown, basically, of the things I've done. 804 contacts, but that includes phone calls, emails, and I have to do, admit, I missed a few days. So it should be greater, but sometimes you just can't get everything logged in. So the process of that is just getting everything into the system, which takes a lot of time. So I'm looking for upgrading, and if you haven't heard of the Skillbridge program, that enables a veteran, excuse me, a service member leaving the military to give them six months to integrate. And so then our office is already approved, I can have a Skillbridge come in and work with them, and they can help me get all these numbers into the system. So I'm looking to get that done and/or a work study through anyone who can, who's using the federal college benefits, can work for a work-study site, and that enables them to get minimum wage, work for the federal government, and continue on with their college, but it helps the officers. And then also, a little bit of outreach I did, I did five different events, and then, you know, always outreach into the American Legion, the VFW, DAV, the Marine Corps League, and all the housing groups that are in the area for veterans. So Insight Housing, the county, the city housing groups, and Victory Village. So working with all of them, and that's just what I've been up to. So one of the other things is I have the AMA program that I established, so it's a time study of all the time that I take to assist veterans with the Med-Cal program. That should, in next year, June of '26, I should see a kickback from that, so I'm hoping to get about 20% of my budget from all that time study. So that'd be a big help. So, do you have any questions?
I just have to say, you have exceeded all expectations, and your positivity and your motivation, you're just a blessing to this community.
Thank you, I appreciate. Veterans are good to me, they tell me this every day. I wish you could hear what they say, but they are very good to me, and they are spreading the word faster than wildfire, thankfully, but that, we don't have that competition. But they are the best advertisement for me, and so, listen to your veterans. They have a lot of needs, they have a lot to share, so I just want to thank you for your time.
Yeah, one, one question, was there amount of benefits brought in?
Yeah, the amount, do you want the monthly or the retro amount?
I missed the total.
It's, it's at the bottom of that one. The retro payment is 793,682. That's the money waiting as a claim gets done, and then monthly, overall, was 1,744,101.
Thank you.
Not much different than Terry. He, you know, he did a great job with claims, so, but from this point on, the numbers will tell us a lot more of, of what we got going on and where we need to be. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the public? Okay, we will go on to the Central Sierra Economic Development District, presentation regarding update on the economic development initiatives, including progress, progress, excuse me, on broadband infrastructure.
Good morning, Chair Brown.
Morning.
Board, staff. Thank you for allowing us to be here this morning and present to you. It is my pleasure to be here this morning. I'd like to introduce myself. My name is Alex Bloom. I'm the Economic Development Manager for the Central Sierra Economic Development District, as well as Motherlode Job Training, the Motherlode Workforce Development Board, serving Amador, Alpine, Calveras, Mariposa, and Tuolumne Counties. It is also my pleasure this morning to introduce Sophia Kaufman, my colleague. Go ahead, Sophia.
Is this on? Yes, it is. Hi, good morning, Board and Chairman. My name is Sophia Kaufman. I am a project coordinator with Motherlode Job Training, and I assist Alex on all things CSED.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's our pleasure to be here this morning and give you an update. I've been in this role as the Economic Development Lead for the Workforce and Economic Development Representatives for this region, and it's been about a year and a half since I've been here to present to this board, and we're currently on a tour of all the Economic Development District counties, presenting to boards of supervisors, city councils, and important stakeholders, just giving an update on what the Economic Development District is doing within the region and the impact that we're having. So if we go to the next slide. Thank you. So today, we'll talk a little bit about our California Jobs First Initiative. For those who are unfamiliar, the California Jobs First Initiative is the largest economic and workforce development initiative in the history of state of California, brought in over $9 million in projects and initiatives to this region, and we'll talk a little bit about the impact and the meaning of that process as we go forward today. We'll talk a little bit about the CASF Infrastructure Grant, that is the California Advanced Services Fund. That is a broadband infrastructure grant that we've stewarded here at CSED for almost two years. We'll talk about the impacts here in Amador County and the future federal funding award account awards that will be coming here to Amador County. Very, very excited to talk about the nearly $60 million that will be coming to Amador County for those broadband infrastructure awards. We'll talk a little bit about our funding sources and sustainability. As a 100% grant-funded organization, it's important that we continue to lead the charge in finding new and diverse funding streams to continue our work within the region, so we'll talk a little bit about how we're pursuing those funding sources and sustainability for the organization. Finally, I'll wrap up with a little bit of a high-level overview about our comprehensive economic development strategy, our SEDs here for the region, and how it aligns with the Jobs First Initiative and all the other work that we do at CSED and Motherlode Job Training. So, talking a little bit about the California Jobs First process. I have a nice little graphic that goes with this, and I should have included it, but we've come a long way in this process. This has been a four-year, moving on to five-year process where we have really worked to engage the community in this workforce and economic development initiative. It's critically important because I think when we think about the state of California, we often see urban centers receive the bulk of those grant funds. The California Jobs First Initiative is critical because it represented each section of California equally. So the state divided the, the state up into 13 regions and gave them each an equal pool of money to develop projects, develop a regional strategic plan, and subsequent activation plans that would actually take that strategic plan and put it into motion. What are the ways that we can affect workforce and economic development in our region, and how can we propose projects that will continue that work? So when we talk about alignment with the state, this project guided us towards a statewide goal, but also a regional goal. So within that regional plan, we were able to develop priority industry sectors. So for our region, those are natural and working lands, sustainable agriculture, community healthcare, sustainable recreation and tourism, and clean energy. Some other load, job trading is actually the industry sector navigators for the sustainable agriculture, natural and working lands, and community healthcare sectors. So we'll talk a little bit more about what that means to be a sector navigator. Sophia's been very impactful in assisting in that role, but those are the three sectors that we steward for this particular initiative. Can we roll back one slide, please? So, moving projects towards execution, there were 39 different projects and initiatives awarded in the Central Sierra region, or the Sierra region. For the purposes of this initiative, we are actually inclusive of our partners on the east side of the hill in Inua and Mono Counties. So it's been a really great exercise in developing partnerships and finding opportunities for collaboration. What we found in this process is that there's a lot of duplicative work that goes on in this region, lots of siloing where people are doing the same things with limited capacity. So a big part of this process has been finding ways to think about collaborating with other partners that we can increase organizational capacity. One thing we know about regional, community-based organizations and NGOs, we all have limited capacity. So when we think about this initiative, that's been a big part of it in thinking about how we develop that capacity internally through collaboration. Our sector navigation work has been critical in this process, so when we think about the Workforce Development Board, that's something we kind of do as a core competency. We work with industry to steward solutions, to find workforce pathways, to get people into family sustaining wage jobs. That is also the core competency of this initiative. So when we think about sector navigation as it pertains to this particular initiative, it's been critical that we kind of lean into those core competencies and really develop better pathways and more innovative ways to approach sector navigation, and we'll talk about a little bit on that, on the next slide. So, a big part of what we've done is convening. When we think about convening over a region, it can be difficult, especially within a geographically diverse and wide-ranging region that we have here. So within the seven-county region for the Jobs First Initiative, we are 7,000 square miles, so we're talking a big, big chunk of the state of California. Within that 7,000 miles, there's only 200, 200,000 constituents. So we are geographically vast, and our population is relatively dispersed. So bringing people together to collaborate, to find those avenues for partnership and to talk, has been such an impactful part of this initiative. We brought people in the room who may have worked side by side for many, many years and never actually had an interaction with each other. I can speak particularly to our healthcare sector in Tuolumne County. We brought together MAC, that is represented here in Amador County, and the Matheson Health Center, who have worked alongside each other for, for 20-plus years but never had gotten a room to actually talk and collaborate and work together. So we facilitated these working groups and sector partnership conferences across those three sectors. We're really, really proud to report that, especially in the healthcare sector, we have now executed two iterations of what we're calling SHIP, that is the Sierra Healthcare Industry Partnership, where we developed a complex, well, a somewhat complex framework to really bring together folks in the next-gen sector model. So that's where we really put industry at the center, and then we put our community-based organizations, our workforce, our economic development, our government entities around the outside, and we listen to industry, and we say, what do you really need? What are, what are the barriers to developing the workforce that you need? What are the things that we can assist as a workforce and economic development entity or agency to support you in that work? And so far, we've been really impactful in the way we've developed outcomes for those. So those were executed on August 1st, and then just last week or a week and a half ago, on September 11th, one on each side of the hill, so making sure that we have equality in hearing the representation from the stakeholders throughout the region. We talked a little bit about those activation plans, so that is what will be the lasting legacy of the Jobs First Initiative. So the regional strategic plan is going to be certified, or is certified now, as an economic development strategy for the region. So it is not meant to necessarily overlap, but to complement our existing economic development strategy. There are certainly some places where there is a Venn diagram of such, where there's similarities and some dissimilarities, but we've really worked to combine the two in thinking about ways we can push the, the future forward for this initiative. The activation plans are really the way to take that strategic plan and put it into work. What are the strategies and tactics that we can take from that to really implement and change the ways that we approach workforce and economic development through the region? What are ways we can assist industry in being more successful, attracting new businesses, growing the businesses that exist within this region, and really retaining those core businesses within the region? So I'm, I'm also very happy to report that the Central Sierra Economic Development District was awarded a project within this Jobs First Initiative. The Sierra Founders Academy is a youth entrepreneurship initiative that will be stewarded across the seven-county region, and will really help to bring young people into the fold of our communities. I think entrepreneurship is so, so critical to this region. 91% of our region's businesses have seven employees or fewer. So this is a region built on the backs of small business and small entrepreneurs. Many of those businesses have one, two, or three employees, so we're really talking a very, very small subsection of our population that is big industry. So when I think about entrepreneurship, I think of it as a way to, A, get youth engaged in our communities, and B, to way to develop new businesses, new innovative ways to approach our priority sectors. So we're really, really excited to get this rolling. This will start sometime early next year, and we will have entrepreneurship programming throughout the seven counties. Each county will have its own session, and it will culminate in a Shark Tank-like style business, business competition, where we will actually award funding to these businesses to start up and get going in this, in this region. I think community action is the second part of entrepreneurship. We have a significant issue with youth outmigration here in the region. We see our young people leave time after time after time to pursue higher education, to pursue opportunity, and to pursue the things that we lack here within the region. 84% of entrepreneurs are millionaires, or 80% of millionaires are entrepreneurs. So when I think about fostering that culture and really growing and lifting this region up to economic prosperity, I really do think it'll be built on the back of entrepreneurs and small business. Another project I would like to highlight is the Sierra Source Initiative. This is sponsored, sponsored through the Tuolumne Chamber of Commerce. This is a regional marketing and co-branding initiative that will also work with our small businesses and entrepreneurs to lift them up. The idea behind Sierra Source is to elevate small businesses to the level of our larger, larger regional businesses. So businesses that may have one, two, or three employees will be elevated and marketed alongside some of our regional big businesses, thinking about Indigenous, Covers, and Ironstone, all these larger businesses that have much larger reach, these small businesses will be marketed alongside them. It will also provide a connective tissue for business to business. What we found is that there are lots of businesses that want to sell to restaurants and hotels and things like that, but don't have those connections existing within their network. So this will also levy those connections within industry to lift up those small businesses. So very, very important work that's being done. I would love to highlight all 39 projects, but these are the two that are very, very close to my heart. So, talking a little bit about our CASF Infrastructure Grant. This is the grant that I walked into in this position almost two years ago now, and we've come a really long way. I think this particular initiative will be impactful for our region because the digital divide is so strong in our region. We have such a strong contingent of our constituency in this region that are either at low levels of internet or have no internet at all. So bridging the divide to the modern economy where you can participate in remote work, where you can do telehealth, where you can have education online, these are all such important components of the modern economy and participating for our constituency and really lifting us up to economic prosperity. So we've really made an impact in developing this initiative throughout the seven-county region, or the five-county region for this, this is a CSED initiative. We had a speed testing initiative that concluded earlier this year. The speed testing initiative allows us to map where our unserved areas are and where our underserved areas. So it's kind of addition by subtraction. We ask people that take a speed test, A, to hold internet service providers accountable for the speeds that you're paying for and that they're providing, but more so to allow us to identify those areas of need where we can serve our constituents with, with reliable high-speed internet. So again, this is such an important initiative, we more than tripled last year's effort. We built our own landing page and website, all done through volunteerism through Columbia College, and so we were really, really proud of this initiative. And as we move forward, this will sunset in about a year, we'll be looking to pursue other opportunities to create a comprehensive ecosystem around this. So we think that broadband access is really important, right? We want people to have access to the internet, but they also need the skills to access the internet. We have a high percentage of retirees and older population throughout this region, and we want to make sure that they're accessing the internet in a safe and competent way. There's also the physical access, so if you have internet to your home, but if you don't have a device to access the internet, or a router or a modem, that's also an important part of this. So we'll also be pursuing opportunities to complement this current initiative in both of those fashions. A big part of this initiative also has been growing our partnerships and collaborations. And so when I first started this initiative, I was, I was basically running it by myself, and a big part of what this work plan asks us to do is do outreach and do marketing to the communities we live in to bring awareness to this project and bring awareness to the lack of reliable high-speed internet. So I started thinking, how do I further engage our educational partners? And started reaching out to the California State University system and landed with a instructor at California State University Fullerton, who actually offered his capstone marketing class services to us for free, basically as a way for his students to get engaged in a project that would be impactful within a region. So this part of this initiative has been critical, and we're now entering our fourth cohort of students supporting this initiative, and I would love for Sophia to talk a little bit more about our partnership with Fullerton.
This is an incredibly creative way for us to expand our capacity, and via our efforts with CSU Fullerton, we've really focused on building awareness throughout the region about the Central Sierra Economic Development District, and also what economic development looks like in everyday life. Additionally, we've, we've tried to, and I think we've done so successfully, increased awareness around the speed test and the need for broadband expansion in the region, not only for these everyday services, for businesses to do, you know, digital transactions, online learning, telehealth, things like that, but also emergency preparedness. Unfortunately, as we know, we face great wildfire risk in this region, and being connected to the appropriate channels in moments of emergency is critical to safety. And so that was one of the approaches that CSU Fullerton's team took this summer, and it was quite successful in its response with the community. So we are very So, we are very happy to have this partnership, and we will continue to increase awareness in the region, both around CSED and the various efforts that we are approaching to improve the region.
Yeah, thank you, Sophia. I can't understate enough how much this partnership has been impactful to this project, and it's a model that we've now kind of taken on organizationally. Because as Sophia said, it does add capacity to our organization, but it also allows students both within-region with our partnership with Columbia College and thinking about the state of California to really develop an awareness of this region. If you live in Fullerton, you probably don't have a lot of awareness about, you know, the Central Sierras and Amador County and Jackson. So, this really has allowed us an opportunity to bring more awareness to the region as well as these projects. Another thing that I'm excited to highlight on the next slide is the Federal Funding Account Awards. So, we're looking at the region's federal funding account awards. These will be stewarded largely through the Golden State Connect Authority, also through some local partners. These are really important awards. This is money that has come through the state of California that will reliably develop broadband infrastructure in our region. So, the one especially, of course, I wanted to point out, there is the one in Amador County for over $57 million. This will expand a huge territory of unserved areas in Amador County, and I'm really, really excited to see where this goes. These will all be stewarded through 2028, so I know that there's been some consternation around broadband in this region and the lack of development. You, excuse me, you will see this development. This will happen. The Golden State Connect Authority is the broadband arm of the RCRC, who many of you may be familiar with, and they do excellent work. One thing that's really important to note within the RCRC's model is that they promote an open-access model, right? So, traditionally, when you have an internet service provider, you may be limited to one choice. And generally, what happens is the internet service provider has to develop that infrastructure and then charge a price that will help them to have a return on their investment. The benefit of the RCRC's model is that they build out the infrastructure and then lease it to the internet service providers. So, it takes that huge upfront cost of developing that infrastructure, it takes that burden off the service provider and allows them to provide a lower-cost service. It will also be open, and to its name, open access. So, it would allow multiple different carriers to access and lease that fiber and create a bevy of different options for consumers. We'll have low-price options, we'll have high-price options, and really, it's just about choice and creating a competitive marketplace. Really, really excited about the way that they're going to implement these grants across the region. It will really increase the connective tissue for our region and develop our region's economic prosperity. So, we'll continue to monitor this. The idea is to do these kind of annual or biannual updates to the boards of supervisors, so we'll come back and be able to discuss outcomes and progress.
Yeah, to that end too, I know, like, I mean, there's $57 million going to be put into the ground. How many of those, I mean, to me, that seems like a really good job opportunity for a lot of people. I mean, what are you, are you doing anything to actually encourage local hiring and also local training for local people to have local jobs?
Hundred percent. So, working with the RCRC, they've been a very influential partner in this work. So, they will be hiring locally for a lot of these positions, and we're kind of being forward-thinking in the way that we're developing pathways to support their work. So, this work is just starting now, and now we're working to develop the skilled employees that we need to support their workforce, right? So, as we think about things like construction, right? Construction is going to be a huge part of that. Motherlode Job Training has a construction cohort that we graduate every 16 weeks, I believe, and we also partner with Modesto to develop another construction cohort. So, we're definitely thinking about those positions. We're also linking local businesses with these initiatives and with these companies. So, if you think about kind of the tangential effects of development, you're going to need the people who are the arborists, who are going to bring down trees, and the people who are going to kind of do the supportive work in these areas. We're also working to connect local businesses with the Golden State Connect Authority, with Sierra Nevada Communications, and really thinking about ways that we can lift local business with these grant awards.
You know, how are you linking local businesses?
So, a big part of what we do is doing business outreach. So, after we conclude here today, we'll be doing some business outreach here in Amador County. When we think about awards like this, we think about that ecosystem, right? What will we need to support this work? So, developing relationships with those companies and then connecting the dots. So, we start with a relationship. We say, "Hey, this is who we are, this is what we do." And then, when an opportunity like this comes along, we connect the dots, right? I think that's a big part of what we do, is being that connective tissue, being that trusted messenger to say, "Hey, you know, Nate's Tree Service, you need to be working with Sierra Nevada Communications to do this clearing in this particular area." Or, X and X Construction Company, they're going to need millions of dollars of construction. Let's make sure you are connected and integrated with these initiatives and being forward-thinking about that.
Do you do that regularly?
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah. It's something that we're growing and developing. The Business Services Department at Motherlode Job Training is only about a year and a half old, so it's been one of these projects that we've really kind of leaned into because we've really seen the need to be that connective tissue, kind of speaking to what I've talked about before, the siloing and kind of the individualism between the counties and the cities and the entities. We've realized that there's often not a lot of communication between those.
How do you do that? You send emails, phone calls, letters?
Generally, not letters. Emails, phone calls. A big part of that has been those working groups that we've established through the Sierra Jobs First Initiative. It's allowed us to have lots of touchpoints with industry partners in those natural and working lands, agriculture, and, excuse me, healthcare industries, and allowing us to connect those partners. Also, kind of through some of the research that we've been able to do, we've been able to uncover businesses. And a big part of what Sophia has done is kind of to catalog those businesses, catalog those industry partners, and find that connective tissue as to where they belong. As we move forward, it's a priority of Motherlode Job Training and the Economic Development District to continue that business outreach. But, to answer your question, Supervisor Onetto, it's generally through physical outreach. I feel like this is a region that values face-to-face conversations, a region that values that person-to-person interaction. Something that we lost during the COVID era was that we kind of relied on Zoom, and something that we've kind of figured out in the years subsequent is that that face-to-face connection is really what this region values. So, doing a lot of personal outreach to businesses, but also emails and phone calls and things like that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, next slide, please.
One more question on that. You said you guys did the mapping on where that broadband should go in? Was it you that did that?
So, the state of California, the CPUC actually does the high-level maps.
Okay.
Our responsibility is to basically fact-check that, right? So, what the speed testing initiative was, or allowed us to do, is to take that mapping from the CPUC and from the, I'm sorry, the FCC. That's the word, that's the acronym, too many acronyms. The FCC and the CPUC both produce maps of coverage areas, and so, in doing that speed testing initiative, allowed us to look at those maps and say, "Where are those accurate? Where are those not accurate?"
You looked at the map for Amador County?
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah, yeah. For all counties. And I think when we're doing, kind of, where we're at with the speed testing initiative is we've submitted those results to the CPUC, and what we're hoping the impact will be is that they'll actually update those maps to reflect our work within the region, and that's kind of been the targeted goal with that initiative.
Just to add on to that is that we had a little bit of a problem, you know, because we've had RCRC in here, and so, we had a little overlap of Volcano Communications. And so, we don't want to hurt our local provider by doing this, you know, and they were, and they're, so, there was communication that was not done with Volcano. So, I ask that you, as you're working with this project, again, please get with Volcano Communication and keep that coordination going, because that was, that was a little bit of a harsh reality that we became they knew and Volcano. So, we need to make sure that we're all on the same team and not trying to fight each other.
Absolutely. Frank is a trusted partner and stakeholder in our organization and serves on one of our boards, and he's also part of our subject matter expert panel and really is a leader in this field. So, thank you for that insight. I'll check in with him.
Please do, because it was, I mean, I've gone to a couple meetings, of your meetings, with Frank, and this was kind of a, when they actually came out and had their actual maps sitting in front of it, and it kind of overlapped. So, that was kind of a frustration point for Volcano, so.
Understood, yeah. I'll reach out to Frank and kind of make sure that everything's communicated clearly. I think transparency of communication is critically important in this process.
Especially on this subject.
Absolutely, absolutely.
You can reach out, but I think the horse is kind of out of the barn a little bit on that overlap.
Yeah.
And if you'd looked at the, ran the speeds, I'd be kind of curious why you wouldn't notice there'd be, because I think Volcano's serving a fair deal of areas already with broadband.
Mm-hmm.
And it's fiber, and if you tested those speeds, I don't know why that wouldn't have shown up.
I think the issue is, is that the state of California requires a certain level of high-speed internet in order to qualify for what their, their goal is to have 98% of Californians served by what they call reliable high-speed broadband internet by 2030. So, what that means in the context of this situation is 100 megabytes download, 10 megabytes upload. Now, one of the constraints that Frank has is that sometimes in those more rural areas, he's not able to serve at those levels. So, that's kind of the sticking point in this situation is, in order to adhere to the state of California's goals, we actually need to develop that capacity within the fiber to serve at 110 in order to qualify for that 98% service. But I'll reach out and talk to Frank. You know, generally, we have pretty good communication. I have good communication with all the internet service providers within the region, and generally, when there is a concern, they'll bring it to me. You know, I have regular conversations with Frank and with Ben Hewitt of SNC and with Alvin Broglio over here in Angels Camp, and I have good communication with these partners. So, I'm surprised that Frank hasn't brought that to my attention, to be perfectly honest. And we just had an iteration of our subject matter expert panel that kind of circled around this at the end of August. So, yeah, we'll make sure that we kind of connect the dots and make sure that our local business is being served properly.
Thank you.
Absolutely. So, we talked a little bit about awareness, and I think one of the important parts of my work in thinking about developing awareness is, it is an organizational directive. So, when I came into this role, our executive director, Dave Tany, who some of you may be familiar with, tasked me with developing awareness for the Central Sierra Economic Development District and Motherlode Job Training. He told me, "We're the best-kept secret." And I said, "This is an amazing organization. We do so much work for the constituents of this region. Let's not be the best-kept secret. Let's go out and educate the public on all the things that we do to support the constituents of this region." So, I just kind of threw up a little graph here, a little metric, just to show you kind of the increase in unique visitors and ways that we've drove traffic to the CSED website through this initiative. So, before we started this campaign, the awareness campaign, we were averaging 10, 12 visitors a day, and you can see, we kind of went way, way up. We went up to almost 1,000 visitors a day based on these interactions. So, we've really worked to develop awareness of what it is, we do, who we are, and how we have impact within the region. So, really, really excited to kind of continue that and not be the best-kept secret in the Central Sierras. So, I talked a little bit about the beginning. How we do funding is difficult. We are 100% grant-funded organizations, both the Economic Development District and the Workforce Board, which obviously provides some challenges when we think about developing the organization. So, in addition to taking on that awareness role, it's been a real prescient point for me to think about, "How do I develop funding sources that support the sustainability of everything that we do?" And thinking about keeping the ball rolling, keeping the momentum strong with this initiative. So, as I mentioned, that first grant, that CASF Infrastructure Grant was the first grant, and that was the only thing that CSED was in charge of when I came into this role. So, subsequently, we've more than doubled that budget in just about 18 months. And the next kind of round of funding, we're looking at these Prop IV funds through the Sierra Nevada Conservancy, which I just went to Sacramento to pitch for on last Friday. That will quadruple that budget. So, we're looking, we're currently at about 1.3, 1.4 million. We started at about 600,000. The Sierra Nevada Conservancy awards will be between $1 and $2 million each, and we'll be pursuing two of them. And I'm in direct contact with the executive director for the Conservancy, and she's very excited about our proposition. Basically, what we're centering this around is the natural and working lands. So, these Prop IV funds support climate resilience in the state of California, and what we're looking to do is find the intersection of economic development, workforce development, and climate resilience. Because I do strongly, strongly believe that nothing gets done in our forests without our workforce, right? We can leave trees in the forest as long as we want, they'll decompose, they'll create methane, they'll create carbon dioxide, we can burn them, but at the end of the day, there is an economic opportunity with that biomass left in the forest. You know, we see so many businesses that are springing up around this industry. I really think it's burgeoning and growing, and a big part of our work is supporting that industry. So, these funds will really work to support programs like the Greater Sierra Forestry Corps, which we steward through Columbia College, which produces graduates to support this industry sector. I believe we're now in our sixth cohort of students at Columbia College, generally on 25 kids. They graduate on a Friday, they have jobs on Monday, and these are good jobs. These are family-sustaining wage jobs, starting at $25, $26 an hour. If they want to continue their careers and learn more about heavy equipment, they can start at $35, $40 an hour. These are real wage jobs that will support our constituents. So, very, very excited about some of the funding that we've brought into the organization, and we'll continue to do this. This is an organizational imperative as well to kind of develop those funding sources that support our work within our industry sectors. Okay, so, I know we're kind of, we're running on time here, so I want to be respectful. So, part of the comprehensive economic development strategy for our region outlines four goals, and there are a subset of objectives for each one of these goals. And I won't run through them all comprehensively, but I just wanted to kind of give an update of the work that I've done and we've done here at Motherlode Job Training in the Economic Development District to promote economic prosperity through these economic development strategies outlined in this plan. So, one is achieving a culture of lifelong learning to ensure a robust talent pipeline. So, we'll talk a little bit about that. Establishing programs and policies that encourage environmental, or, I'm sorry, encourage economic development, and then encourage, expand the region's development capacity through stronger collaboration, and then identifying and implementing land management practices. So, talking about climate resiliency. So, it's those kind of four key tenants that are the guiding light for what we do in all of our work, and we look to integrate into all our initiatives and projects. So, lifelong learning, what does that mean? I think we've shifted from a culture that says, "You go to high school, you go to college, you get a job, you work 40 years, and then you retire." We are now entering a generation of students who are lifelong learners. I was at a workforce development conference in Monterey about three weeks ago, and one of the presenters presented a statistic that was jaw-dropping. Today's students, the people who will be graduating in the next five to 10 years, will have between 15 and 20 careers throughout their lives. So, when we think about lifelong learning, these are folks that are going to grow and learn, learn new skills, upskill themselves within their industry sectors, or move through industry sectors. So, we've really tried to encourage a strong pipeline within the region in thinking about that. A big part of that is career and technical education. Career and technical education is a huge part of the workforce here in the Central Sierras, so we've worked to support that in Tooluma County and the region at large. I think it's a very, very important part. We're actually working with Amador College Connect, which many of you may be familiar with, to develop an industrial arts training program to kind of align with this career and technical education initiative. So, some very exciting work. I've kind of got the highlights of things that we've done up there over the past year and a half in thinking about how we support this goal, but overall, this is a really critical component of thinking about lifelong learning, career and technical education, and the workforce for this region. So, programs, policies, and practices that encourage economic development. I think an important part of thinking about this region is creating a pro-business environment. What makes this region more attractive than, say, Merced, or Sacramento, or Fresno, right? Why should a business bring their industry here? Why should they come to the Central Sierras? I think a big part of that is the Workforce Development Board. It is not universal throughout all regions of California where the Workforce Development Board and the Economic Development District work so closely with industry partners, work so closely with the community colleges, and really think about workforce and economic development as this comprehensive ecosystem that supports industry. So, a big part of what we're doing is really thinking about those relationships, the way we can develop them and continue to support business attraction throughout this region. Obviously, innovation is an important part of that. The bioeconomy is what the state of California has identified as our priority sector, aligning with the California State Economic Blueprint. So, obviously, thinking about ways that we can innovate within that industry sector is also a priority. So, expanding capacity. We talked a little bit about collaboration and partnership, and I think this is a critical, critical part of what we do. Un-siloing, finding ways for collaboration and partnership, and really identifying ways that we can improve capacity through these small organizations throughout this region is critical. So, we really work to foster that collaboration. A great example of this is the Jobs First Initiative. So, prior to the Jobs First Initiative, Motherlode Job Training and the Economic Development District had very light affiliation with Inyo and Mono Counties and had very few partnerships. I can speak to only like one or two, the Eastern Sierra Council of Governments and perhaps a couple other. perhaps a couple other community-based organizations, Sierra Business Council over on the east side. So we've really worked hard to develop those partnerships and collaborations on the east side, and the result of that has been tremendous. I mean, I can speak to that all day, but I'm really, really excited about the ways we've kind of improved our regional capacity through collaboration and partnership. And we can talk more about that, but this is something I'm really proud over the last couple of years. And then finally, we, we talk about climate resiliency. I mean, I, I don't think there are many conversations that can be had about this region and about economic development without incorporating climate resiliency. We live in a fire-prone region, and forest stewardship and land management are key practices in this region to keep our constituency safe. So as we think about economic development, there is this intrinsic tie to land management and land stewardship throughout the region. So very, very excited to propose those projects to Sierra Nevada Conservancy and kind of continue and embed ourselves in that relationship. We really think that there is an opportunity here to grow within this region and to become that impactful stakeholder that stewards these land management, land stewardship work throughout the region by supporting workforce and economic development. So just a couple of quick highlights, things that we've been doing throughout the region. I am a guy who, I don't like to be all talk, I like to be action, I like to be involved in the communities that I, I represent. And so really, I've made that investment clear. So attending community and economic development workshops, furthering my education through workforce conventions, attending Day at the Capitol. So Day at the Capitol is a really impactful event where we're actually able to go and talk to our legislators and show them, educate them, because we're not allowed to lobby or advocate as our organizational structure, educate our legislators as to why workforce and economic development is so critical within this region. And really just thinking about ways that we can be more invested in the community. How can we support career and technical education? How can we support the bioeconomy? And so I've really leaned into that and getting myself immersed in doing those face-to-face interactions, making those connections, and developing relationships organizationally. And that's all I have for you today. I am happy to entertain any questions. I really appreciate you all letting me in here this morning and give it a little update about the things we've been up to and the good work that we've done throughout the region.
Any questions from supervisors?
Not a lot of information.
Thank you. Any questions from the public? Any questions from Zoom?
Not at this time.
Well, I thank you very much for the presentation. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Board.
Thank you so much.
Okay, next thing we'll go on to is 5C Library, Presentation of Summer Reading Program.
Hi.
Hello.
Much shorter. Yeah, thank you. I wanted to take some time to update you on things that have been happening at the library, because I know the last time I was here, I sort of presented on my vision and goals for the library and wanted...
Go ahead and say your name.
Oh, yeah, Alyssa Ramirez, County Librarian.
Thank you.
And so, yeah, I wanted to update you on how those vision and goals are being put into practice by myself and my library staff. And one of the big programs that we do every year is our summer reading program. Like Storytime, it's sort of a hallmark program for, for libraries, because we work to combat what we call the summer slide, in that students, you know, not using the skills that they learned in school, you know, during the school year, during the summer, if they're not using those skills, then they see an academic slide or regression. And so libraries have found that kids that are able to participate in summer reading, or in any way, shape, or form utilizing those skills that they've learned, then they see much greater success when they return to school in the fall. And so our summer reading program this year, we sort of revamped and reassessed and sort of did a whole new thing this year. First, we opened it up to all ages, so we had from 0 to 99 participating, which was a lot of fun. I think the adults had a real kick participating this year. So we had 393 people register for the reading portion of the summer reading program. About 20% of those readers returned their logs, but of that 20% that returned their reading logs, we had a total of 160,000 minutes read, which I think is fantastic. I'm sure that if we had had more reading logs returned, you know, we would have seen even more minutes read, but I thought that was a fantastic start to, to our program. To encourage kids to keep reading, we offered, you know, as many incentives as we could, some smaller prizes, like pool ticket to the Jackson Pool, movie tickets, things like that. But then we also had larger prizes that we raffled off, thanks to generous donation from the Friends of Amador County Library. And so we were able to raffle off 25 larger prizes. Surprisingly, one of the most popular ones was a Highland cow stuffed animal. The amount of kids that put all of their tickets in for the Highland cow was really But yeah, it just was a lot of fun, a great way to connect with our families that we're serving, and a great way for us to invite, you know, more families to come into the library. The second portion of the summer reading program is obviously like our programs and events, and we hosted nine programs over the summer. A kickoff event, six regular events, one special event that was in partnership with the Master Gardeners at their Heritage Rose Garden, and then a closing event, which was a pool party at the Jackson Pool. Excluding the special event, which had a limited capacity, we saw an average of 75 attendees at our program. So really exciting to see that many people participating, not only participating in our programs, but then even staying at the library afterwards, hanging out in our kids' area. We had a pretty solid group of people where, after the summer reading program, would hang out and kids would play and parents would chat, and just was really neat to see community building because of the, the summer reading program. I also wanted to make sure that I shared pictures, which is why I included the, that's why the report is mostly pictures, because I think the pictures really tell a picture of, you know, what it was like for people attending those programs. Again, lots of fun, lots of great feedback. Of course, in the sort of top-left one on this bottom half, you have Ms. Tasha, who is one of our regular volunteers for Storytime, and came in and did a special summer reading program event. And if you have never experienced a Storytime with Ms. Tasha, you are missing out. She is a character.
Was it Tasha or Pasha that used to volunteer here at the county?
That I don't know.
Maybe like 65, 70?
She'd be in that age.
Heather's nodding yes, because yeah, she was, she was really something.
Okay.
Unforgettable.
Yeah, unforgettable and hard to miss, you know, when she's in the room. So that's sort of my quick and easy recap of summer reading. I did just also want to briefly mention that, you know, now that summer reading is closed and we had, you know, great success with it, we're continuing on with some fall programming. So we have a fall reading challenge, which is a bingo card, because who doesn't like bingo? We are also going to have a story walk throughout October. A story walk is where parts of a story are posted along a walking path. So as you're walking along the path, you can stop and read the, read the story. It's going to start at the library, go through Dietrich Park, and end in the cemetery. And then our last program for the fall is we will have a community ofrenda at the library. So ofrenda is a way of, you know, honoring our loved ones that have passed. And so the community is encouraged to bring photos or objects to, to add, to add to the ofrenda. So I guess, any questions for me? I was trying to keep that short and sweet.
Appreciate it. Anything for the board? My question is, are you thinking about expanding this to any of the other districts? You know, the Plymouth, I own Upcountry.
Mm-hmm. The fall reading challenge is at all branches. And then when it comes to things like the ofrenda, I always, I always let the branches know that this, like, this is something that we're doing, and if they want to participate, they are welcome to, and I help them get that established at their branch. But I like to give them some level of, you know, local control of, you know, they know what's...
Right. I'm, I'm just saying, like, the summer reading.
Oh, yeah, the summer reading went throughout the entire...
Because Pioneer has the, we have the scout, we have our own scout hut up there, and, you know, the, the main veterans hall. So I just want to make sure that...
They're included.
Yeah. That those are available.
Yeah, so to clarify, the reading portion of the summer reading program did go to the whole county, so all of the branches participated in that. So when I say those numbers, that is countywide. As far as the events, some of the branches, you know, had their preferences for like events that they wanted to do, so let them, let them do that. Some, like Plymouth, like piggybacked off of the events that we had, so we just kind of, we did our event and then passed, passed it along to that event.
I know, it's just all your, all you described was Jackson, so I just wanted to make sure we're not just doing it in Jackson. You know, you had such a wonderful thing in Jackson, but I'm just hoping we can, you know, we can go somewhere else, too.
Definitely, and I think that that's in the plan for, for next year. I mean, for us, you know, last year, we had a much smaller summer reading program, and I believe in years past, we have as well. I mean, but also, like, last summer, I wasn't yet on board with the county. And so this was already a major expansion, and we're kind of testing the waters to see how it goes. And, and so I, I know that in thinking about the program for next year, we're looking for ways to, to expand that out, definitely.
Thank you.
You know, just a curious question. It appears like there's less homeless around the library, is that, you say that's true? Generally?
Yeah, I, I haven't had many incidences lately.
Yeah, it was a real problem for a while.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I, I haven't had any incidences worth noting or sharing. I think that that's been largely...
Nothing to say is, is a good thing.
Yeah. Nothing to report there.
I will say, I spent a lot of time as a, as a kid at the library, and for lack of a better description, some of the real nice ladies at the library probably babysat me for a fair, a fair amount of time.
Still going on.
As long as kids are being good, hey, it's not a bad thing.
Oh, yeah, exactly.
I'm, me, my wife and I are personally enjoying Libby, so I thank you for the continuing up.
Oh, absolutely.
That, that part of it, yeah. Went camping this weekend, and I had my phone with the Libby on it to listen to a book.
There you go. Got the audiobooks.
That's it.
Well, thank you.
Okay, anybody from the public? Anybody on Zoom?
Not at this time.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, 5D, Discussion of Possible Action Relative to Salaries of Electoral Officials in Amador
Well, this, I put this on the agenda at the request of the elected officials who had made the request, it's included on the agenda. I also included the Board of Supervisors in there. It's up to you as to whether or not you want to discuss your own salaries or not, but it seemed like this was an opportune time. So I'll leave it to you. The, the electeds are here and can answer any questions or...
Does anybody want to be a spokesperson?
That's a smart group.
Oh, you got power behind you now.
Uh, Rooney, he's, he's good at this.
Jim Rooney, Amador County Assessor. Well, I want to tell you something. We had no plan, we have no plans. I was sitting back there, I said, "Should we go up, should we not?" And I'm going to tell you what I think briefly, is we're asking what everybody else got. And over time, if we start falling behind, then we get into that compaction issue, and then... And I think it's a simple request, get what others have gotten. I went to the store yesterday, and I don't know who puts forth the inflation numbers, but inflation is high, and then 5%, I'm not even sure that's keeping up. However, that's what we ask for, and that's what we would appreciate the consideration of. So I'm going to let others talk if they want, and we respectfully ask, or make this request.
Good morning, gentlemen. Amador County Sheriff Gary Redmond. So I'm very appreciative of the fact the Board did authorize the 5% for the mid-management management unit, which obviously impacts my office. So that puts my undersheriff currently, I'm about 3% ahead of my undersheriff, so without the 5%, I'll be around roughly 2% below. So like Jim said, I think we're just asking for what are, most of our seconds-in-command and the others within our agencies received. So thank you for your consideration.
Good morning, members of the Board. Todd Rebe, Amador County District Attorney. I too thank the Board for giving the management the raise that they deserve and the other bargaining units what they deserve. Compaction is an issue, not only for the sheriff, it is for the DA, too. In the event that this request is not approved by the Board, I will fall below several people in my own department. So compaction will occur, and I'm not aware of any of my colleagues that are facing the same situation. So it, it is something that it needs tending to, and I hope that is addressed by the Board.
I just want to thank you for your consideration today, and just reiterate that we are not asking for anything more than what the other units have asked for, which also we are asking for longevity at the 35 and 40-year levels as well to match management and mid-management, although none of us are at that level at this point in time. But we thank you, we know you work hard, we work hard. I think that we've all put in, you know, a lot of effort, and we try, you know, I know personally, I work with a lot of departments, and Chuck, and Greg, and the Board, and we just, I'm always trying to help everybody out. And things are very demanding, and we do the best we can, and I just appreciate your
Okay, back to the Board.
You know, one thing I'd say, as far as the longevity, I mean, I have heartburn over that. I mean, at 30 years, they get additional 15, almost 16%. That's, that's probably enough, I think. Where's it stop? That's one thought I have. I have some heartburn with increases. What they're talking about compaction, I do hear that, I, that's a problem. I think what Mr. Rooney said about going to the store, I can't disagree with that. I think inflation, and inflation numbers, probably more than 5% if you look at actual cost of living. I don't know. Then again, I also look at, last year, we clawed back 2 million from Rhodes, that was, or recently clawed back 2 million from Rhodes, so I don't think their request is unreasonable. I'm kind of torn, have a little heartburn over it. Don't know which way I'm going yet.
I mean, I'm talking to other counties, and our county is in really good shape, I mean, comparatively speaking. And I'm talking to some guys that are having some really hard times. And I, I think a lot of that's attributable to staff, being conservative in the longer haul. And I mean, I don't have a problem with the raise, I think it's, it's fair. I mean, it's, it's, I mean, I don't know, if you're doing a good job and machines are running, you know, I think that's fair.
Mr. Chairman, I, my only really concern is, usually when we're dealing with mid-management or any of the groups, there's not the disparaging base wage there is here. And you've got four people making the same, and we worked last time to get that all even, if you remember, because it was all over the lot. And they, not picking on anybody, but there's just such a gap that a 5% raise... And they, not picking on anybody, but there's just such a gap that a 5% raise, I'm not picking on you, Sheriff, compared to a 5% raise for the assessor, there's a lot of money difference. I realize compaction comes into it. So I would consider we maybe need to change the, to a dollar's amount and forget the percentage. Or if you wanted to make the 5% for the, for the same, and then the same dollar amount that is for the two higher page, because that's a real difference for a group to have, the minority have so much higher base pay. And we're trying to control costs wherever we can. If that would handle a compaction, which I don't know, I didn't even look into that. Instead of a percentage all the time, dollar figures.
You know, I think, yeah, I, that's something you're bringing up, Pat. I've thought about that to a certain degree for a long time. It's something I'd like to look at, because there is, it is a cost of living, basically. And so one part, whether, if you have the highest ranking person maybe getting, say, you know, around, just in, in rough numbers, say you want, one, one's getting, say, a hundred thousand dollars, one, one's getting 5,000, and somebody's at 50,000, you know, they're, they're getting 2,500. Well, they have the same cost of living, pretty much. So after, over time, it's, yeah, that skews, if you're looking at cost of living adjustments.
Just bringing that up is a different way to look at it.
Oh, it's, it's worth, it's worth consideration.
Forgive me, I'm new to this, I was just looking at it different ways. Our total salaries for the county's 40 million. If this is because a gallon of milk costs more than, a gallon of milk costs more for every single person who works here, so a 5% raise would be 2 million across the board to everyone. And then if we divided that by 441 people, we could come up with an exact dollar amount that every single person got the exact same raise, because it's about the cost of a gallon of milk. I've heard that idea is not very popular, so.
That would address the compaction issue too, really, I would think. If that's how it was going for, you know, going forward with all units.
So the break-even point on that, if we were to do that, the, the break-even point is $43.30 an hour. So everybody below that would get a little bit bigger raise, and everybody above that would get a little bit smaller raise. But none of these raises are performance-based, they're all about the cost of a gallon of milk. And I, I mean, I think we could argue too, the people that are on the lower end are more likely the ones with children at home and, and maybe have a greater need for raise. It's just, it was just a thought I had.
Well, we, you know, most of our, I mean, all our unions and everything else, this is, you know, we've done everybody else except this group and us.
Oh, we already have?
Yes.
Okay, so two years from now, or whenever this happens, I want to bring this idea up again.
That's fine. We'll be reopening negotiations in the spring.
Well, what you could do maybe is make a precedent. There's that too. Say, hey, this is how we want to go forward. Now, if I was a sheriff and DA, I wouldn't like that. Now, if I was maybe, the other ones, I might say that's okay. No offense.
I've got to ask, you know, the Board, you know, there's two items on here. There is the electeds and the Board of Supervisors as electeds. So there's two different groups here. Is the Board entertaining themselves at all, or are we going to leave it alone?
I think you should.
I have a thought on that. Again, new to this. I do know some people closer to my age who would love to pursue this office at some point in their life, but cannot, based on pay. So at some point, it maybe could be addressed, but just my personal concern is we just, the ink is drying on the budget that we just approved last meeting, and we had to cut. So we had this huge budget deficit because of raises, because of internal lawsuits, multiple reasons, and, and we could have actually absorbed a lot of those, but one of the main things was that our sales tax came in around $1 million under what was projected, which means that there were 10,000 budget meetings, around 10,000 dinner tables, where our employees, the taxpayers, were actually discussing the pay cuts they were taking or the loss of employment altogether. But we balanced that budget, and we did it, we pulled it off through a lot of work, and we did it by cutting the products that we're providing. And I just would prefer some time went by where some meetings took place, where we, where we're actually open meetings between different departments, between all of us, where we're, we discuss how we can restore those products and restore the services that we're providing, and then at that point, maybe discuss it. I just, I don't love the timing of it when the ink's drying on the budget. Although I do think at some point I'd like to see some younger folks run for these offices. Not that there's anything wrong with ages. I just would like that to be an opportunity that would be available, and it would have to be a, and as far as impaction goes, the county clerks make more than the supervisors, so. Worth noting.
Never thought about that.
There hasn't been a raise in 10 years, Chuck?
No, seven.
Seven?
Seven for the Board.
I would just like the opportunity to present to the public over the course of a few months how we have demonstrated that we have recognized the, the trials with the budget, recognized the things that we cut, and we've demonstrated that we have started making pathways towards, and I'm not saying we aren't, I just would like the public to have evidence of that.
Well, would you want to, I guess we could bring it back in a few months if you wanted to thought.
We're going to start.
Why is?
New negotiations with some of the units.
All the units will be open in the spring.
All of them, okay.
And you know, I, I would like to explore what I think supervisor crew brought up as far as basically having almost a flat COLA. See what, what everybody would be, put it in a pool, and do a flat COLA across the board, from high to low, this which you had cost of living adjustment. I think it'd be, I don't want to get into equity and equitable with DEI and all that stuff, but I'd think it'd be more equitable. And it's, I think it's, it's, it needs to start, so I think it'd be, it would probably be helpful across the board, I think. The people at the higher pay scale are probably doing, probably better than the ones at the lower pay scale, and we still got to buy the same darn gallon of milk, dozen eggs. Maybe one might buy a little better clothes, maybe not, but it's, it's a cost, I mean, you're looking at, a lot of this stuff is trying to keep up with the cost of living. And one, one is going like this, and one's going like this. It's, so it's a little bit of an issue.
I just want you to consider the hard dollars of the move, not the percentage. Because we always talk percentage, and then after the fact, Chuck tells us it's going to be this much money. I'd rather know how much money that is before I get there.
$1,992. If we did it across the board.
Right.
Exact number.
But we didn't know that yesterday, we had to ask about it, there just. 5% of what is always the question.
Can we give you a few numbers?
So for management, the unit, that was, the 5% increase was $158,080. Mid-management, the increase was $174,740.80.
Per year?
Yes. And so that's, the two of those, just those two units, we're not talking ACIU or confidential, The electeds that we're proposing to you, $50,627.20.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Okay. Further, I don't know, I mean, I actually didn't realize it was, there was this much difference, but there are a number of positions, let's say, in the management unit that already, without having, they're going to be getting a 5% raise, they are already above the four of our salaries. So we are, and I'll, I'll just, if I could, just walk this by you. If you want to, yeah. There, so we're actually on the lower end, looking at that unit.
Well, the, the people that make more than us is Behavior Health Director, Community Development Director, County Council, Director of Social Services, Director of Transportation, Public Works, District Attorney Chief Assistant, General Services Director, Health and Human Services, Health Director, there's five or six more here.
There's only, one, two, three, four, five, seven positions that don't make more already, and they are getting the 5% increase.
And you know, can I say something about, Pat, you and I talked about this a little bit yesterday.
You talked.
You did a little talking. The, the numbers you're talking about, total, I understand some of the lower people making less money, 5% isn't as much, and sometimes that just seems unfair. 5% is simple and clean. We're not talking 15, 20%, we're talking 5%. And I think we might start getting a little bit into the weeds of, but anyway. We, we, I'm going to, I hope that this is okay to bring up, but isn't 3.5% budgeted for everybody to begin with?
Yes, that's correct, for all the units.
So there's.
Sorry, not public safety excluded.
So anyway, we were just, when it went 5% for everybody, we thought, well, let's not ask for more than that. You know, I, I wanted, as I was sitting down, I was thinking of something. From about the year 2008 to about 2015, gosh, I guess it's just me and Todd at this point, but the electeds, things were in a bad way, and I'm talking bad. There were 10% decreases in assessments, and we knew it. And for like eight to 10 years, we said, let's be the, the good players. Let's not even approach and ask for anything, because we just knew it wasn't there. And we did go a long time with our raises, and later on, while we didn't get the increase in pay during those years, later on, the Board was pretty good, and they brought us back up to where it was, even though we kind of went years without that. And so we have, the county's run well because of you guys, and I think we have good electeds too. And we are asking the 5%. What's that?
And Chuck. County Council.
So I guess that's what I have for now, there was one other point.
Well, I, I would, I would, I would not disagree with what you said. It's true.
Yeah. So, anyway.
For me, I'm not disputing that everybody should get paid what they're worth. I'm just questioning timing, because can we do this in the spring with everybody else? It's just the time, I'm telling you, I floated this to the public, and they were like, well, you better put it on the front page of the paper. That's the first thing they said, and I guess that happens every single time.
You know, I, you're, you're right about that.
You just said you cut kittens, you cut 4-H, and now the first thing you're going to do is, that's, that's what I heard from people.
When is, when is there a good time? For us, there never is a good time. There really isn't.
Christmas?
No, I mean, for our requests.
I do encourage the Board of Supervisors to take a raise, and you'd sail through, wouldn't even be mentioned. We'd be on the headlines.
The reason this is here now is because everyone's raises go into effect October 1st.
Right.
So that's the reason for this timing, is that they're negotiated in the spring, but they don't go into effect until October.
What was the raise that was voted on in February? Was that from a years past?
That was, that was to match last year's raise, that the general unit and.
That was just catching up.
And we did not get the full percentage on that. At that point. I can get the specific.
Again, I'm not, people who do their job should be paid, I'm just, I don't want to walk out.
There, there's never going to be a good time to get a raise, especially when you're elected and having to give yourself a raise or those around you. I'm, I'm fine with the raise, it's, in the vast scheme of things, it's not that much. Everybody else has got their raise, it's largely budgeted. I mean, I'm fine with it on both sides.
You know, Logan, you made a pretty good point. You want good people in office, especially with the supervisors. You guys are the stewards of the county. It's got to be worth people's time, and I'm not talking about us, I'm talking about the supervisors. I've sat back here for years and watched them, watched this group bypass themselves and not give themselves raises. And I think they were thinking about politics. It never looks good giving yourself a raise. They should have done it a number of times. Now it wouldn't be something you guys have to deal with. They should have pulled the trigger and done it, because you want people who are considering this to say, is this worth my time? And there's probably some good, good people out there who said, you know, I wouldn't mind doing this, but I have other things to do.
It's a hard thing, because that was one of the first things that I came on the Board.
Yeah.
Is not doing the pay raise associated with the, the judges. You know, because that's what it was, you know, before that. Because we were having to cut the budget at that time as I came on the Board. So the, the unions weren't able to give them, we weren't able to give the unions the percentage, if you will say, at that time, and then we were going to get more, and that is just not fair. So that, that part of it has always been a controversial part of it, you know, and then that's, it's a hard decision. But I've also got to look at my own wife, she sits and goes, hmm, I would like to buy that extra gallon of milk here. So it's, it is kind of hilarious, is.
It's tough, and we have to discuss, you know, have these discussions always in public.
And so it's always a, you know, and then, and we have, as the Board, been seven years. As the Board has not given themselves a pay raise in seven years. So that's a, it's kind of an interesting gambit as we're trying to look at it.
And I was, we're probably missing some of the cost savings. I mean, if you've ever been in a negotiation, know how much they cost. They cost more than their raise, honestly. I'm just saying, other bargaining units, you guys are just here asking, taking 30 minutes of your time or whatever it is. I mean, we're saving money by giving raises.
By not bargaining, unionizing.
I've been in some of those negotiations, and I'm like, man, your negotiation costs way more than your raise, but there you are.
We're asking for what everybody else had. This group up here, they, you guys have to do, it is a whole different thing.
It is, it is interesting.
It's hard, but, all right, anyway.
You know, just a thought I have is maybe, if, if we did give them an increase, I'd like to see, take that number, what total increase would be, and make it even, just even across the Board. So, yeah, it's 5%, it's figure out what the salaries are, 5% of that, and split it equally among the electeds. And as far as the Board of Supervisors, it has been a long time, and the Board's taken no increase. And I think, I think some increase we took years ago, we may have did an offset on what we paid in CalPERS. Yeah, we got an increase, but most went back into paying more in CalPERS. That's not, I think that's correct, so.
Okay, well, the, the total wage increase for the six officials would be $39,419. Divide that by six, that gives a wage increase of $65.70 to each employee, each of the six. I think my numbers differ just slightly from you, but, you know.
And it's something I'd like to see maybe spread across to all the units, and maybe say, this is a start. And maybe all the bargaining units will say, it's toxic, and they'll say, hell no, and maybe we'll never do it again. But I'd like to put that forward.
Is this, is this, are we addressing, everybody else has already gotten this, and we're just the last?
Yeah, it's, it's.
Yes, but we're not the first.
No.
No.
I just think that would look bad too. Make sure the parents eat first, and then see if there's anything left over for the kids.
The kids got it first.
Kids got it first. More kids? Good, we need more children in this one.
I would like to address the, across the Board. So the way I look at it is I have a tremendous amount of supervisors within my agency. Sergeants is where they start, and then you go into being a lieutenant, captain, et cetera. So effectively, what you're doing.
what you're doing, and I don't know if you realize this, I don't believe it would be intentional, is you're now penalizing people for promoting. You're penalizing them for taking on that added responsibility, the liability that goes along with being a supervisor as you continue up. And that includes myself. A lawsuit, my name's on it, being the head of the agency. So I don't believe that would be intentional. But then across the board, hey, let's make it equal. I'll be the first to tell people, life is not fair. If you work hard, you're gonna get promoted. If you sacrifice, you're gonna get promoted. Effectively, what you're saying is, you're not worth it. So that's just something I want to throw out.
Our names are in lawsuits too, though.
Can I add to that?
All kinds of them.
This would benefit me, I'm not gonna speak for the other people in this building, this would benefit me if you did it that way. I'd get a little bit more. I'd appreciate it. But 5% would be fine with me. You know, it would cost me a little bit, and I appreciate the consideration, but.
I think, Jim, it's not so much even, even your group. I'm looking across the board, all the county employees, and hey, there's something we've done. I think it's a fair thing, maybe.
That's fine, Brian. I just wanted to tell you how I felt.
Yeah, no, I understand that.
I think that's a valid point, Sheriff. I mean, that's, yeah, I see both sides of that argument. I guess the performance-based aspect of the raises, go get promoted, and there's more money over there.
So we're still back to the board.
I'm fine with the raise. I'm ready to go.
We got that down.
Just to be clear.
So what would happen is both, both the electeds and the board supervisors have to have their salary set via ordinance. So you would give us direction to bring back an ordinance to enact the change. So whatever it is, direction you want.
So now it would be just a direction. So the next board meeting would be if somebody of the public or anything else, because, you know, this will go out, you know, as, as we should or shouldn't do this. And so at that point, it would be decided, true or false?
Yes. And an ordinance takes two meetings as well. And then I think for the board, it's 60 days before it goes into effect after the second board meeting. I think for the rest of them, it's 30 days after.
Okay.
So there's a process.
Or if it's vote too?
Yes, I think for yours. I think for.
Yes.
Yes.
So now is that including the Board of Supervisors too then, in that motion?
Well, no, there's no motion. It's just, I'm just trying to find out the procedure.
Can we recuse ourselves from this decision because we have a financial benefit in it?
The whole board recuses.
I just want to say one more time, I know it needs to be addressed. I don't like the timing. I would prefer that we discussed this like after things all the way dry on the, on the budget.
But it would, but it would be discussed another time.
So this would just be the initiation of.
Yeah, this is just initiates the.
Well, usually the second is on consent, but if anyone wants to pull a consent item, it usually is for discussion. So one for sure, that would be discussed in an open meeting and then a consent meeting.
And then, then this also too, there is, so it also is delayed just by the process itself. So I mean, the, the raises wouldn't kick in till after the October 4th date anyhow. Is that correct?
Yes.
So it'd kick in sometime mid-October, late October for the electeds and then for the board to kick in 60 days after that, it wouldn't be for another?
No, further out than that, because it'll take, it'll take two meetings to get an ordinance passed. And then 30 days after the ordinance is passed, will it go into effect? And 60 days for the supervisors, your salary.
Right, okay, yeah.
You know, I have a.
We're three months, two, three months out already, so.
I have a question for County Council, just a thought. I get in trouble with my thoughts. One of my pet peeves is we give out raises, increases, and a lot of them are justified. But then when hard times come, how do we make our budgets? We cut costs, we lay people off. Maybe some things, some people need to be laid off. I can see there's a, there's a reasonability to that, but we never reduce salaries.
The only time that's happened is when the county, when the employees did the furlough.
Yeah, 36 hours, work week or 38 hour work week.
But this.
Yes. Is there a legal way where you could do that? Say, hey, we're, you know, we hit hard times, the ship is floundering? Reduce salaries on by 5%?
You can propose it, but I don't think you can impose it.
Okay.
The electeds and mid-management, we could oppose it.
I don't think you can to the electeds.
Times are tough.
Reduce their salaries.
Management, maybe, unrepresented management. But no, you, you can't lower the salary of an elected after it's been set.
Okay.
You can always make a donation.
And I'll say that during the, yeah, they did do that. Yeah.
Yeah, during that furlough, everybody took 10%. Was it 10%?
It was, it was a 10% reduction.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I think Todd and.
No, we all, I didn't, yeah, we all said, oh, we understand. We took the 10% cut like everybody else.
That was commendable.
Well, yeah, might have been in the election year or two.
Not for everybody.
No, we, we did it. We did what we, everybody else did. It was fair.
Okay, it's back to the board. Do we have any motions? I don't think that the public. Well, you need to come to the podium if you actually want to say something.
I, I, I think Paul Molinelli Jr., speaking as a private citizen today, I think the point that Supervisor Cornell made about getting the supervisors that a younger person with kids would want to do this is a good point. And that's why, as well as the electeds, I think the supervisors, including and the electeds, should get a raise. It's about time. You guys have a lot of responsibility. You all do a great job, as do all of the elected officials and all of the county employees. But it's, it's time, and you should do it.
Thank you. Okay, still back to the board. We've gone through public, we've gone through Zoom. Nobody's got a raised hand, I see.
At this time.
Okay. Anybody have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the raises as requested.
For both board and elected officials?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion on the. 5%.
And the longevity too?
No, that, was that longevity in that?
No, I'll hold that for next.
Okay. And do we have a second? Okay, that has died. Okay, Supervisor Crew seconds it. We'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Opposed. Okay.
I think I'm gonna go. I agree.
Nay. Okay, so that dies again. Cause it needs a, as far as I know, it needs a four fifths.
I will double check that. And if it doesn't, I will, I think the direction.
Oh, this is just direction?
Direction.
Okay. So we'll have another chance to vote, vote on it then?
It'll come back as an ordinance, draft an ordinance.
Direction was given then.
And if, if there's any other direction you want to provide, then you can as well.
Yes. That was 5% for both. Yes. Okay. Thank you. Interesting conversation on this whole subject. So direction is given. So this will come back on a subsequent board meeting. Is it two weeks or is it?
I would like to see it divided up across the board, but that's kind of where I'm at.
I think it is in two weeks. We start getting into the odd. This is the first Tuesday, October.
Okay. Okay, we're moving on. To 5E, 2026 Proposal Solid Waste Fee Index Rate Adjustment for Republic in the unincorporated area of Amador County for Pine Grove Buena Vista Transfer Station. I don't think you have any backup. I hope you have your shield on. Uh huh, come on up.
I was gonna say we could skip this item and come back to if we find.
Are you looking for?
Usually our.
Jeff, is Jeff coming?
Yeah, he should be here, but I don't know where he is. Heather's gonna go find him so we could go to the next one.
Okay, we'll come back.
Okay.
Okay, 5F Administrative Agency Temporary Reduction of Park and Recreation Impact Fees.
Supervisors, if you recall your discussion from a couple meetings ago, you gave some direction. I asked just to make sure that there was no special requirements to implement the reduction. There essentially aren't, but I did prepare a resolution just so it's completely memorialized. That's, well, that's before you now.
Come on.
It reduces the fees for single-family dwelling and multifamily dwellings both to 1,500. And the, that's for the regional fee. The local fee would be unchanged.
So can I bring up without a lot of details what I learned yesterday? Is that allowed?
Accra's facing some greater challenges than, well, we tried a theory to keep Accra alive and it's, it's looking more likely that that might not take place. And so the entity is, I mean, we have some big decisions to make about its existence. So I think that does affect impact fees from the sense that the original intent and how they'd be dispersed and who would be making those decisions is changing. So I, I'm just glad to see that until we have all those details worked out, we're gonna at least reduce the amount that we take. If not, cease to take them until we have a better sense of how we're gonna spend that money.
So if Accra dissolves, then does that go back to us then, I would assume?
Yeah.
Yes, we would take, so Accra manages most of the county parks.
Correct. Yeah, they also own them too.
Well, we would, yeah, we would have to, so Accra, the entity would have to figure out how to distribute and sort of wind up all its assets. I assume those parks that are owned by Accra, since they're in the unincorporated county, that they would come to us. That would be Molly Joyce and Lions Park.
We probably, it's probably a little premature. I don't think we've had any analysis on whether that's gonna save us or cost us, because it could be saving us a tremendous amount, could be costing us if we have.
It would probably cost us a bit, but not an extraordinary amount, given what we're already paying to Accra for the maintenance and participation fees. And there'd be, there would be a little bit more, but I don't think it would be tons more.
Okay. Cause I know, I know it would be, there would be probably fully benefited positions. That was the analysis that, I mean, I was on Accra for a dozen years, and that was part of the reason to have it was to be able to hire employees at a lower rate to be able to have better parks. That was the part of the methodology behind the whole project. When it, I wasn't there with dad's inception, but I certainly was there for a good chunk of the middle of its life, so.
I think with the possibility of rewriting a nexus so the money could be used differently, Nexus study. I mean, if we're gonna absorb the responsibility for all of the parks, and then simultaneously we pursue that, I mean, we could, I mean, the future could actually be bright. Might cost us a little more, but we could produce a better product.
Yeah, the developer fees, that probably, I mean, I'm making an assumption here, but I would think that the Parks Master Plan, most of those things, the studies are updated every five years or so. I mean, sometimes you stretch them, I would save a few bucks. But I think all the parks, the plans, the lists, all that stuff would, is my guess, would be still enforced, even though if it does shift the city. I mean, it's, it's a study, you know, it doesn't really matter who's enforcing it, as long as you have legal authority to do so. But all the projects on that list, I think would still be active. I can't imagine why they wouldn't be.
Well, you know, part of that is that.
Would be operated by Accra.
You know, that we had regional parks. And so this will be the conversation, are, do we still have regional parks? Or are the parks assumable by that area? You know, so that will be a, a different, you know, the, because we've called regional parks, there's Dieter Park here in Jackson, Your Park in Ione.
And then Molly Joyce, I think.
You know, so those were called regional parks, and that was funding part of it. I'm thinking when it goes back to the county, those wouldn't be regional parks anymore. Those would be the city parks. So that'd be kind of an interesting conversation at that period of time that we need to have.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I would, I would suggest that the money that's been collected under the current system probably still
Would still have to be distributed.
Right. It'd be going forward probably how that would be. I mean, I'm making a lot of assumptions. I don't want to get too far down that road.
I, it'll be a little bit of work for Tacy's office too.
Uh, yeah. No, I'm, yeah, that raise will.
Is this an eminent decision on Accra?
No, but it could become very eminent.
We're just, we're giving warning right now.
Giving due warning that it's highly plausible that this is gonna all of a sudden be a hurry up and.
Very well will likely be a, a topic for next agenda.
But I somehow legally connected it to the subject of.
But it's a, it's definitely gonna be an octopus to get a wrangle onto.
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody want to have opinion on this for the public? Anybody on Zoom?
No, not at this time.
Okay. Looking for a motion to reduce impact fees to $1,500.
Second.
Call for the vote. All in favor?
So this is, all right, this, so this is the, the resolution that's in your packet?
Thank you.
Yes.
Temporary park impact fees. Okay. So now, unless anybody has anything else, it will go back to 5E, 2026 Proposed Solid Waste Fee Index.
Good morning.
Morning.
Sorry, I missed my spot there. Get to working on the computer in there and time just starts to fly.
Gonna whip you with a feather.
Yeah. So we worked with R3 again. This is the first year that Republic has taken over and is owns the company. And we're moving forward with them. It's a standard index rate increase, which means it's not a detailed review of their stuff. They just apply for the rate increase. They get the standard rate index is the CPI index that applies to the solid waste and some other industries. So they did their review. I was just, I was just looking at, back at their report, at some of the costs overall, some of the big, some of the big ticket categories that they look at, labor, diesel fuel, vehicle maintenance, all other. I know Supervisor Onetto had asked me to have them sort of look into some of the, the maintenance costs and those kinds of things. And I, as I reviewed this right now, non-union labor went up about 8%. It looks across the board, looks like across the board. Diesel fuel costs actually went down, which was kind of surprising to me. Vehicle maintenance went up tiny bit 1%. went up tiny bit, one percent. All the others, about three percent, so that's normal CPI kind of stuff. And depreciation, which I was a little shocked at, actually went down about eleven percent. They do have a lot of new equipment out there now. Republic is, ACES had, had increased the amount of equipment when they were, after they got their big, their contract, they made a push to get a lot more equipment, a lot, a lot more vehicles that could handle the type of area that needs to be handled by equipment in, in, in our county. And Republic has, has continued to maintain that, that process. And I've noticed quite a few several new vehicles that they've added too. You'll also notice you don't see a lot of ACES vehicles anymore running around. There are some, but those are all turning blue with Republic's name on them now. So, so much for the keeping the branding local. That lasted about a year. Maybe Paul can address that, but the overall increase for the year, three, three point two five percent for Area One, a little over five percent for Two, a little over about four and a half for Three and Four. Not huge increases. Pine Grove, the, the transfer stations tend to, to be a little bit higher normally than just, than just the waste service. And this year is no different. Pine Grove, eight point seven seven, Buena Vista Transportation, six point six nine. It is important to note that we have a specific methodology that we go through that's, that overlays this process that R3 uses when they do this to make sure that costs that need to be included are included and costs that shouldn't be included are not included in this process. So a lot of people, well, they used to pick on the Mullenellis driving around in fancy cars and other people at the, at, who work there, having nice trucks and those kinds of things. Not as easy to, to see with, with Republic, but that was never any part of the cost of the actual waste services.
Can you remind us what the different rate areas are? You know, you have one through four, you know, that Area One is where?
Area, I'll let him, Paul knows specifically.
Paul Mullenelli Jr., Republic Services. Those rate zones are the old franchise areas.
Okay.
So rate Area One is Martel, Plymouth, Fenando Valley out that way. Rate Zone Two would be, you know, Comanche, I own and Buena Vista. Rate Zone Three is everywhere else. So Jackson, up country, well, the unincorporated parts of Jackson and up country. And Rate Zone Four is like from Dewdrop all the way to Kirkland.
Thank you. I was, I was trying to read through all the, you know, stuff and I was like, I couldn't figure out which, what our rate zone, you know, the different areas were, because it doesn't define them in anywhere.
I used, I apologize. I used to have a map. The very last thing was a map that showed the rate zones. That didn't get stuck in this packet. My fault.
Not a problem. I just, I was trying to read it and I was like, meh, I can't see it. Okay.
So it is an index rate increase and it's part of their contract. We don't have an option not to pass it. I, I guess Greg could, could opine on that.
It, it is in the franchise agreement that this structure will be used to, to pass the rate increases. Not the amounts, but the, the process by which we would agree to what the rates are.
They're asking for five percent too?
Just kidding.
It's a percentage based increase, not a fly rate.
Any questions from the board?
I had a long discussion with council others about kind of the process. I mean, my larger concern before with having an outside entity and not a local outfit would be that they would come in, raise rates and eventually just consume us. But yeah, yeah, and we appreciated your time. But we, I mean, I'm satisfied that it's, you know, it's, it needs to be done, so.
I mean, this is not part of the rating grease, but I've had a lot of, ACES had, had done a lot of handshake agreements with some of the residents as far as recycle and other stuff. And so the residents have called and had made, you know, say, hey, this is what you guys do. You can't get your big trucks in here, but we still want to be recycling. We still, you know, put my orange bag out every two weeks and that kind of stuff. And they called customer service and they've been rebuked, you know, so it's, no, that's not, you know, that is not true. And, and so that has been a, a huge, for, you know, especially some of the rural, rural areas of the up country that, you know, you, you can't get the big rigs.
Right.
Into. And so you've got to run around with, you know, that little, the little jalopy, if I want to say. And so it's a, it's really frustrating. One other question that I had for Paul, which is not part of this, is I see a for sale sign on that property. It sits on the corner.
I, well, I, I was waiting for that. That, that, first off, the property, that, that's a different lot. That is the property.
I was hoping.
Belongs to Dr. Durkin, the dentist that used to be in Pine Grove.
Okay.
It's, he's, I don't know where he went. He's retired, I guess. But that's, that's his property. Republic is not selling any property that it acquired from ACES. So the good news is that could, that road could still be widened.
Yeah, I would still love to see that. I mean, I don't know how many times a month I have to stop for, because nobody else is stopping for your truck to turn left and it's backing up traffic way down the hill.
And they, Republic, I don't know what the timeline is on it, but they understand that, that the commitment that ACES made several years ago when we expanded the tonnage up there at Pine Grove, that we said that we would ultimately work with the county and do that and Republic will honor that.
Okay.
Are we talking about Marty's property? Dr. Wyrocks?
Dr. Wyrocks, right. Yeah, we bought that. Well, I mean, ACES bought that years ago.
That's the one you were concerned with was for sale.
There's just a sign, I mean, I, I know what you, I'm thankful, because it just, the sign is on the other side of the fence.
When I drove through Pine Grove the other day, going to Pine Acres, or going to, not Pine Acres, but Roaring Camp Friday night, I saw that and I couldn't understand why somebody, you would think that, because I was like, oh no, it looks like that's Wyrock property for sale. But it's not.
Okay, any more questions? Okay, do I have a motion? Oh, public comment, excuse me? Public comment? Anybody on Zoom? Nope, nobody on Zoom?
Joey gave us a thumbs up.
Okay, I got a motion from Supervisor Crew. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, second by Supervisor Epperson. Call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Please talk to Republic about, you know, maybe somewhere getting some notes in that ACES.
Yes, I, I, I will do that for sure.
Because I know that, you know, it's a call center. You know, they're going back to a call center and not going to.
I personally like to see them reverse it and I don't hold my breath for that, but my, I hope to perhaps convince them maybe that, that would be a good idea.
Okay.
It's, it's, I hear.
No, it's.
I get call, personal calls and I, and I'd certainly, I don't mind getting them. I'd be happy. I wish, I'm glad people contact me, because I wouldn't find, they didn't tell me, I wouldn't know.
No, it's just, it's just frustrating, you know, and that's, you know, because ACES have done a, you know, I mean, other than cost, everybody gripes about the garbage cost, but it has, it's customer service wise has always been excellent.
We had, we had a very good, we had a very good team in, in our business and they've kept most of it. And all of the employees that pick up garbage, they're all the same.
Right.
But I will continue to impress upon management at Republic to, they need to make some changes in the call center.
Yep.
I don't think it's working.
Is there one, one other thing you could mention to them? I don't, I don't know how you'd do it, maybe a note on the garbage can, but all my neighbors still put their garbage out the night before and every Friday morning I drive, the, the bears are sitting there waiting for it. And I think they're earning their wage or their increase, because I think the, Ryan has to go pick all that up every morning and I don't think any of the neighbors are aware that all that's, you know, they're still asleep. But maybe some note that says, put your garbage out Friday morning instead of Thursday night.
You've got a good bear. He just keeps it right there. My bear would haul it to the back of my property. He does, I watch him on the camera, you know, drag the bag around and then tear the bag apart out in back. So the garbage company would never know.
He's not neat. He basically repaves the road every day.
I let my hunter ed students know the best day to hunt bears is on Thursdays, but they don't.
And they don't even clean up their mess.
They don't.
What's wrong with those bears?
I just thought maybe a note on all those garbage cans, so Ryan doesn't have to go pick it all up every day.
Okay.
I, I would, I would, all I would say to, to, if you live in an area prone to bears, I would not put it out the night before.
And the one thing I can say is that your drivers are, are definitely on the specific time. You know, I can, I very well love the fact that I can trust the time.
Yeah.
The bears are well aware of the time. They have it on their new Microsoft calendar.
I'm talking about in the morning, putting it out there. I don't have a bear out there at seven in the morning. Thank you very much, Joe.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, 5G Revision to Public Works Standard Plan PW dash eleven trench restoration.
Morning Board, Richard Villa, Public Works Director. This item came, is really originated through the Public Works Committee. They asked that this be moved forward for consideration by this board. Basically, what it amounts to is when a utility is putting a trench down the road, running along the road and, and, and they, in parallel with traffic flow and such, that the pavement restoration extend from the edge of pavement to the center line. Right now, it, we have the, the width of the trench plus one foot on each side and on the inside of, you know, close to this, to the center line, if you're within three feet of the center line, then you have to go to the, all the way to the center line. So basically what this does is just make it automatic for all trenching. The current standard calls for that consideration I just mentioned for collector roads and arterials, this is for all roads, as, as I, hopefully I've correctly interpreted what the committee wanted, so.
Now, the, the question is for some of our rural artery roads, you know, a lot in the back country, that are county roads, they're a car and a half wide type of thing. So it's not really a center line sitting there. So how does it work with that?
Well, that's, I think we'd probably have to look at it on a case by case basis, I would say. I mean, I guess where I'm, where I'm coming from in my thoughts is I know this, this becomes a benefit for the county, obviously, because we're having less cuts in the pavement. And when we have a cut, it's in a center line, so it's not in a wheel path. So its impact on the road surface is less. But as that is a benefit to the county, it's an increased cost to utilities. So I, I, with your, the specific question, I guess that's be something we probably would need to look at a little closer. Just because of that, because it will be, it is an impact. It would be the impact to the, to the utilities that, as it is, I don't know if you'll have any comments, you know, during this discussion, but especially if there's a utility that's got a lot of work going on, a significant amount of footage, the added costs could be a significant part of their budget for their project. So I think initially I would probably stick with kind of the road center in, in, in what you're saying. But if we want to address that in, in more clarity, we could, we could do so and maybe say for roads that are less than.
I mean, PG&E has been themselves been paving one of, a lane of their work. Is that true or is that, is that always or is that just on certain roads?
That seems to be in a lot of the recent work, that's what they've been doing. They realize that, you know, it's, the work that they're doing is, there's enough disturbance and it just makes more sense for them to, to do it that way. There is also, depending on who you're working with as far as a paver, sometimes it's easier just to pave a lane width of pavement.
Right.
It's cheaper for them, the, the equipment and.
Use standard equipment instead of just a narrow trench equipment.
Exactly. And, and it's actually, you know, costs more in asphalt. It's, it's the time savings because they can use larger equipment and more efficient equipment. So sometimes that's, becomes a, a choice that they make on their part that we end up with the benefit from.
I know like the broadband interconnect thing that fifty seven million, they, I don't know if you heard when they referenced that earlier, all that connection, I'm not sure how many roads are gonna be disturbed during that process, but that could be a significant impact to county if we don't pass. That's my thought.
Well, they were, I mean, they actually said that they were gonna try to keep in trench, I mean, in.
Right, correct, yeah.
You know, on the side of the road type of thing.
Yeah.
Unlike, unlike PG&E who have to go three feet, four feet down? What's their depth?
Yeah, that's, that's typically, they don't want to get that far down, just so there's no, no potential impacts.
And so on the sides of the roads that they, if they trench on the sides of the road, they have to make sure that culvert or that drain is rehabbed or is that a separate process?
If they're going, typically what we like to have utilities do is to put their facilities underneath our culvert. So that if we have work to do with the culvert, we're not impacting their facilities.
Okay.
That's what we request. Sometimes we go out and find, that's not what happens.
Yeah.
We're out there pulling up culvert and there's a line that we didn't, but you know, we, we call for USA, so we're found from that standpoint. But sometimes we find lines that have been bored right through our pipe.
Yeah. Is that why my, my thoughts are that, I mean, they're gonna be doing a lot of work up here, at least monetarily, and it's probably gonna be disturbing all kinds of things, roadways and otherwise. I just want to make sure that they're fully aware of what we've got and what your requirements are. I suspect they will. I just don't want to leave that piece off the side there.
I was at my Silver Drive the other day and they were kind of roughing those roads up a little bit.
Yeah.
I'm sure it's cold patch and probably be going back hot, hot patching, but even so it's, anytime you tear up a road and put it back, the good is new or good as it was, it, it never is.
Yeah.
You know, a question I'd have too, you're talking about for trenches that run across the road, could we, could we maybe require slurry seal in that? Or, you know, you could get an exemption if you want for some reason, because it seemed like they, the trenches that go across the road, they always move, slurry seal might move a little, but the other ones, yeah, they pack them, but they always slump.
Speed bumps.
Yeah, they are.
They become, speed dips.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fair.
It, it's interesting. There are a few companies out there that do a great job. I found one that was on Highway eighty-eight and thirteen curves. They did a really good job, but some of them just don't.
They probably use slurry seal too, my, my guess.
Are you talking about the, the slurry backfill of the trench?
Yes.
Okay. That, that's, that's something we try to encourage.
I should slurry seal, my mistake.
So in fact, a lot of the companies rather use that. It's, again, it's a little more cost, but it gives them a satisfaction, it gives us a satisfaction that we're gonna get a, a trench that's not gonna settle.
Could we make that a requirement where, which could be waived by Public Works at their discretion? I'd like to do that.
Yeah, I don't see why not.
I mean, that'll be a whole nother ordinance, wouldn't it? I mean.
Well, it's not, well, I don't know, procedure wise, I mean, we're talking about one item. Whether we can add another one to it, I'm not sure.
Yeah, well, is it the same item or not? I guess it's just giving direction to how we actually want to implement the item.
Should be able to add that.
Okay.
That verbiage to the bottom of that diagram.
All right. I think I would. And give, and give the Public Works Director. And give, and give the Public Works Director, then as low as you need to go, wouldn't it be as far as that? Because that'd be, um, it would be a call you'd be making, wouldn't it, Richard, if there's like a, um, for some reason, one gave you a deviation of that requirement? That'd be your, probably your, your decision?
Yeah, um, but I know a lot of, usually your, your, your companies that are doing a fair amount of trenching, they'll, it's, it's cost effective for, for them to do a slurry. If you got a single crossing or cross, um, you might, we might get some pushback on it. I don't know.
Okay, but then you could look at that and make a judgment on it.
Yeah.
Or whoever, whoever takes over your position.
I know from our standpoint, when we do our own culvert replacements, we like to use the slurry because it, it takes away that, that factor of trying to get the compaction around the pipe and such and, um.
Yeah, it's always kind of a struggle.
Sure, yeah.
Plus two of the pipe rots off. I think that slurry seal might almost work as a pipe. Slurry, not seal.
How challenging is the process to get an exemption? So if like Joe Schmo homeowner needs to trench from his house to his neighbor's house, and now he's on the hook for repaving the whole road, I mean, how challenging is it? I don't want this to affect some 33-year-old kid who just bought his first house.
Why would he have to trench to, normally it's across country for all electrical.
If there were ever the possibility that he had to, my neighbor had to trench to get water to the house they built.
He went, he went across, like, not down the road, but across the road?
That, in that instance, yes, he went across.
I see.
If there is an instance where they would have to go down the road, they're not PG&E or 57 million dollar grant funded Golden State, whatever.
We'll put that request in, maybe on the same thing as I asked, as far as a deviate, you know, an exemption or deviation.
And those can be addressed on a case by case basis with, because they'll need an encroachment permit to perform the work.
Okay. And then our departments would know how we're trying to protect our, just our local citizens.
Ultimately, if any decision is not agreed to, it could be appealed to the board.
So that, there is a process for that?
For every decision made by staff.
Okay.
That in our code.
But would give staff the ability to say yea or nay?
Yeah, the staff has the ability to do it without making it go to the board too.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm just saying that if there were.
I see what Logan's saying. One person, one's isolated instance, somebody's doing 50 feet, one spot, who cares? But one, you got somebody going miles and miles and miles down our roads. That's a little different story.
Yeah.
Okay, except with the addition of Supervisor Neto. Oh, actually, does anybody in public want to speak on this?
Joey.
Anybody on Zoom?
Not at this time.
Okay. Back to the board for a motion with Supervisor Neto's addition. Did you want to make that motion?
I think Cornell had like addition to, but possibly, same thing as far as that?
I.
Or is one the same, I guess?
I think mine's included.
Okay.
I think there's already a. The infrastructure is already in place to appeal.
Okay. Um, I'll make a motion to approve the revision of Public Works standards with every, talking about revisions. And that includes, um, this, the slurry backfill with an easy ability for deviation or exemption by the Pipe Works Director or designated.
Okay, so, so I'm, so what I'm clear, that's what I understand, that you want to require the slurry backfill for the trench. That's, that's, and then if someone wants to do conventional compaction and backfill, that would be an exemption to that, to the standard.
Yeah.
Okay.
And is that for perpendicular?
You know, that's a good question.
I mean, a trench is a trench. I would, I would say it would work for all trenches.
Okay, we'll make that my motion. All trenches and if they want to do something different, they got to talk to you or your designated. Public Works Director or designated. That's my motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, that passes 5-0. Okay, next, since you're standing there, Engineering and Traffic Survey on County Road Speed Limit Recommendations.
Okay, um, we had a, a speed study that was done in 2018 and, uh, the, the recommendations from that study, um, were good for the seven years. So here we are, seven years later, so we wanted to, uh, address those again because the enforcement of those, once your study becomes, um, outdated, whatever, enforcement by radar, by, by the CHP, they can't do it anymore. And that's why there's a vehicle code that outlines that, um, that requirement. So the, the CHP is usually pretty good in letting me know, you know what, we got these roads and, uh, we're not going to be able to enforce your speed limit by, by radar unless you update your, your, um, your studies and, and ordinance accordingly. So that was the impetus for going out and getting a, a study on some roads. And so that was, uh, we, we took care of that. We did that this last year. And so in your, in the staff memo, there's a list of road segments that we, we took a look at. In addition to what we had before, we had a, a request from a property owner on Comanche Road on the segment between Curran Road and Jackson Valley. He was concerned with, uh, vehicles speeding in, in that area and there was no posted limit in that section of that road. So we included that in this study as well. So, uh, one thing that's, so we got the results of that. And, um, for the segments that we looked at, either the speed limit would, would remain the same or could be increased by five miles per hour depending on, on the segment. And that was dependent on the 85th percentile speed that was measured and, and applying the, the, the available methods for, um, setting the speed limit. With that, recommendations from, from the report, I know there's always a reluctance for governing agencies to increase speed limits. That's usually not a popular, um, thing to do, even though, even if it is only five miles per hour. So I asked the consultant to, you know, to, to, to do a, a, a good, uh, search of the, um, vehicle code to see, you know, what latitudes we have in regards to, um, having to do that. And, um, there was a change made to the vehicle code in 2023. And I have outlined that, um, in, in my, um, report here. And, um, we can, for a particular road segment, if, if we can determine that the existing speed limit is posted that's reasonable and safe, if we can verify that there aren't any general purpose lanes added to the road and that the existing speed limit was established by a previous engineering and traffic study. And, um, so this is kind of the first time we've gone through and tried to implement that. And so, um, the, on the second page, I have a table here that summarizes, uh, the recommendations. You can see for each of these segments, in the columns towards the right, I've shown the existing speed limit. The next, then there's a, last three columns are the speed options. One is the recommendation from the traffic study based off of the, um, data that was collected. And, um, with, uh, adjustments that could be made, um, you know, based off of some allowances that are in the code. The second column there, uh, from the right is applying that newer section of the vehicle code, which means we could maintain the previous, um, study and posted speed. And then the last column is staff's recommendations. And basically I've, what I've gone through is to take the, the, um, the, um, option or recommending the option to try to maintain the speed limits as they are. Because all of the roads meet those criteria that we can do that. So that's, that's just my recommendation, just given, um, previous history, discussions with the board when we have these issues come up. Now, we could just go straight off of the, um, recommendations from the traffic study. And in a number, I think there's a, uh, maybe up to half a dozen of these segments where the speed limit would increase by five miles per hour. Not a, not a, um, large impact, but, um, usually those, when we do those sort of things, they get frowned upon by, by the public and such. And so, um, so it's really up to the board, you know, on, on how they want to recommend, uh, the application of these speed limits. And then once, um, that recommendation is made, you know, give, staff's given direction on how to proceed with that, we would, uh, come back to you with an ordinance change reflecting the decisions that were made in regards to this. And then go through that ordinance process.
From what I gather here, if we did, almost all of them could remain the same, correct?
Yes.
And so we don't have to buy a bunch of new signs and.
Correct.
I'm only seeing Loopy Road seems to be the only one that sort of would have to change.
Yeah, that one would go up.
Shenandoah too, I think.
Comanche has, the section there has no, nothing posted that will go to 50.
Yeah, yes.
From Curran to Jackson Valley.
Yeah.
Yeah, the neighbors out there, uh, Curran Road, they know they were definitely, would prefer something slower from what I'm hearing. I don't know if you've heard any feedback or not. And I know that little, uh, piece between reservation and top of that hill, it's got to recommend at 35, I think. The, the one neighbor, he'd, he would, he was requesting a sign at the top going down. There's one when you come in towards, uh, Comanche, by reservation there, it says 35 bound on curves. And then when he gets to the top of the hill, I don't, I don't think there's one that goes the other direction. I'm not positive, I could be wrong on that, but they were requesting some notification there too. And if you could, um, add some additional signage, that would be amazing too. Because I, I talk to neighbors, the, there's a, the Senatoride, um, uh, noise bars, we call them. It's all, the, the neighbors are three or four of them there. I know them all pretty well. And they'll tell you that it's just nonstop. Everybody cuts through there at night. It's just super noisy. I'm not sure if that's, if that could be addressed or just some additional signage. I mean, we need some, obviously more policing probably. And then, uh, Curran Drive, that one there was another one too, where they, they, it's, they'd say it's a lot faster than it's posted. And I'm pretty sure people are driving already, but maybe some signage along there too. I'm not sure. Just some, that was just public comments I solicited.
Sure, sure.
So it's, there, those roads are 45 and they're staying at 45.
And then, uh.
The Curran Road.
In Comanche and Curran, is that going to be, will that be the signage be, be addressed there, I guess? If there's none there now, no posted seal, speed limit, will there be a posted speed limit?
Yeah.
Okay.
On that one segment, we would put up new signs with the posted speed limit.
Very good. Yeah, that's what it looked like. I was making clear. Okay, thank you.
So I think this will be the least amount of complaints that we've had though. I mean, you know, some of the roads have gone up 10, 15 miles an hour.
No, there's just a couple of spots out there where people just always cut through and they always cut lines. And it's just, it's noisy and dangerous. I guess that's the bigger thing.
There are those, um, those center pavement delineators.
Yeah.
Um, that are there so that at night they reflect. And then obviously, when you drive over them, you know that you're crossing over the, the line. So they're, so they provide more safety. But I, I've heard a lot of complaints from people, um, because they are noisy. If people are going too fast and they can't stay in their lane, well, that's a problem in itself.
Yeah.
I know there was a section on Comanche Road where we actually removed those because there was a section where it was narrower.
Yeah.
And, um, not so much with vehicles, but trailers that they tow are wider, the, the, um, the, um.
And to be fair, those houses, that one section, their setbacks aren't that far, maybe 75 feet or something.
So that's something we've, I've heard in the past. I mean, it's there. It does provide a, 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 a level of, of safety for, for the drivers and such, but it is noisy for the people who live along the road.
And the one house too, uh, one of the complaints, you know, not against your course, but it was just a, they have a blind driveway on the bottom of that hill and they have a, have a heck of a time getting out there because I've, I've been in that driveway dozens of times. I can tell you, it's a little bit of a crapshoot every time you pull out. But it's just because it, that hill drops off and then blindly, that driveway's kind of tucked on the side. So I don't know, maybe some blind driveway signs or something. Just more signage to maybe make more wear.
Yeah. And, and the property owner can put their own signs up on their side of the driveway as well.
Oh, cool. I'll let them know that.
They can do that. I mean, I know there's one on New York Ranch Road, for example. You come over the hill and it says blind driveway ahead and it's right there on the right-hand side. The property owner's done that themselves because, um, for their own, for their own safety and good. So, you know, they, the property owner can always do that as well.
So this will come back as an ordinance? Normally under, uh, um, oh, shoot. Yeah, consent, thank you.
No, not, not at first.
What's that?
Not at first.
Oh, so it would be two, a two more thing. Okay.
This is direction.
Okay.
I'm probably not looking to change. I'm a little bit surprised that Climax Road's 30 miles an hour. I swear people go faster than that.
It's the way to get around traffic that are going too slow on ridge. It's been a racetrack my whole life.
If you look at it, there, there, the, the numbers indicate it could be higher, but I think staff is doing what the board had requested before, which is.
And I think.
It'd be as low as possible.
Yeah, people probably still probably do 35, 40. As long as they get creative. And if that problem is you put up at 35, they'll be, they'll be doing 40 or 45.
Right.
So I'm happy with it.
Okay, um, is everybody good with this?
Yeah.
Cool. Thank you very much.
So just to make sure I understand, you're wanting us to move forward with the recommendations.
So your directions have to move forward, bring us back in ordinance.
Okay.
And we'll bring that back for us and then we'll put it back on consent once it's, it's third time.
Great, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, 5I, Discussion of Possible Action Relative to Authority Function Processes Surrounding the Committee System of Board of Supervisors.
Supervisors, I'd put this item on, uh, just because it was obvious from some of the questions I've been getting from some of you, some of staff, uh, that there's, uh, some communication improvements are needed, particularly among the, uh, the committee system and how the committee system decisions are, are approved by the board. So, uh, what I'd like to do, and I'll just cut to the chase, is to start putting the committees, the, putting action items together for the, those committees and putting those action items, the minutes, into the board agendas. So that, that if the Public Works Committee recommends going and buying a, a skid steer, which they did, then that recommendation, uh, will, will be in the, uh, committee minutes. And the whole board will have the ability to, to see that. That way, people who are not on those committees, supervisors who are not on, on those committees, can better see the decisions and, and direction that's being given. I think that will help all, all five of supervisors understand what's being done in the committees. I don't, I, I think that's not necessarily being conveyed and it's not easy to do without, you know, violating the Brown Act. So, but do, by doing that, uh, it'll be in the minutes and everybody will, uh, will understand what's, what's happening. Unless you'd like to do something different, uh, or if you're happy with the way things are going. I have one other question before, uh, on this item too, but I'll take that after I get feedback on that request.
I think it's a good idea myself.
I do too. I think it'd be great to get more information.
So, um, okay, well, we will, we'll start that. Uh, second question is Admin Committee. Second question is admin committee and hiring process for department heads. What we've been doing has kind of been an informal, informal process, whereas if it's a, a lower-level department head, the chairman and the vice chair will sit in on the interview panel. If it's a, a more senior department head, like Public Works Director or something like that, the entire board will sit in on it. And we've left that to the chairman, to the discretion of the chairman. Any thoughts on changing that? We, I'm asking this now just because we have so many that are, are coming up. Environmental Health's gonna reopen, and Public Works Director's gonna reopen, and we'll have the Public, Public Works Superintendent's gonna reopen. Things like that. How do we want, is, is what we're doing okay, or do you all want to sit in on all of them, or none of them, or what?
Or can we just have the option to sit in if we so choose?
The, well, if, if there's more than two, it's gonna have to be an advertised Brown Act meeting. And that's, yeah, that's the problem. And that's how we've done it in the past. We've just done the chairman and the vice chair, and then we don't have to-
And then other experts, not just-
And then other experts, yes, as needed. But that, that's issue. So if we, if, if, say, the Environmental Health Director, when we get to that point, the, and you wanted to sit on, in on that, I would say make the request to the chairman, and, and we would put the entire board together and do it in closed session, maybe before or after a meeting. But that's, that's where it's getting tricky, is, is trying to, do, want to set a standard or a rule, or just play it by ear?
I'm fine either way. I mean, I think it's, I think if, if one of the board members has a keen interest, I think notifying the chairman's probably adequate.
Talk to the chair and-
Yeah.
See where we need to go. What's that?
Let the chair decide.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think like the Public Works Director, I think, I'd like to see something like that, the whole board.
I, I agree, and that, that's my intent. I'm, I'm not talking about, I'm talking about the lower level.
Okay.
Public Works is, is important. Community Development Director would be important. Yeah.
I think the lower level, I'd be okay with just going chairman, vice chairman, and if, and if a board, if a supervisor wants to weigh in, maybe talk to chair and say, "I'd like to be in this, you know, that meeting," and then you could advertise it.
We could, oh, yeah, or swap it out, I guess.
Or swap them out, whatever, yeah.
So, if we're gonna do it that way, is there, can we use some method where we all are aware when this is taking place? You know, similar to the first part of this conversation, I got a phone call, "Why had, why'd you pave this road?" And I went, "We did? I didn't know we paved that road," and that's when this started, so, I mean, if, could we just all be made aware?
Yeah. Understand, yeah. So in, in interview processes, I will, yeah, I will make you all aware of what we're doing early on in the process.
And do we all have the right to see all the people who applied?
Do, I think so, yeah.
Yes, you should be able to review applications.
So, yeah, okay. So, I think I understand where, what you would like to see, and we'll make it happen.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
That was just a direction to staff.
And Mr. Chair, just before you, before you adjourn, I had a, a point I'd like to bring up before we adjourn.
Well, we're doing minutes, but okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
Minutes and bang, you know?
Well, you, you know me, don't you?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, five J, review and possible approval of the September ninth Board of Supervisor meeting minutes.
So moved.
Supervisor Cornell moves, or do we have a second?
I'll second that with maybe minor corrections.
Got a second from Supervisor Crew, but do you have, what's your minor?
I had a couple of small ones, nothing major.
Call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Yes, sir.
I wanted to bring the consent agenda back for reconsideration, for a vote to bring it back reconsideration. I just wanted to talk about one item. We're looking to purchase skids steer, which I'm all for, but I want to make, put maybe some flexibility in there if they wanted to buy some, some used, some used attachments that they could, or they can go forward just with original purchase. I was just looking at, like, they had a, I could grapple a buck in there, brand new, for like eighty-three hundred bucks, and we're getting it from Sourcewell, so it's a wonderful price, right? Caterpillar has a brand-new one for seventy-two fifty, or you can buy a used one for thirty-three fifty, and I bought used stuff from them before, and it's damn near like brand-new. And so I'm just kind of having a little bit of heartburn with the Case Dealer and Sourcewell. I think if it's supposed to be such a damn good deal, why is it so expensive? So I'd like to say, well, we're still looking, going forward to doing this, but it can be modified, possibly. That would be item six I.
How do we do that in the procedure?
So, so, the code does allow for a motion for reconsideration. It has to be brought up at any time before the next, by at least the next meeting. So he can ra, raise a motion for reconsideration now. The board would then vote on the reconsideration motion. If that passes, then you would reconsider that consent item, and if it doesn't pass, then you wouldn't.
And would we reconsider at this meeting or the next one?
Right away.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I guess my question is, could we say, "Yeah, we're still, still looking to purch, make that purchase, fine," but could they modify it, and maybe if they decide, hey, that's a better value to buy a used grapple bucket, if it's good shape?
That would be very simple to tweak the, the, the resolution to allow that modification. So, yeah, if you want to reopen it.
Okay, I make a motion for reconsideration.
Second.
Call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we got one, no.
Manny's tough.
Okay, still passes. Unless, I didn't hear, okay, never mind. Four-one, and reconsideration, and what's, I forget what the item number is.
Six I.
Six I.
And what they have put forward in six I, I'm fine with, but I'd like to give them flexibility if they could find some used attachments that are a better bargain, or better bang for the buck, that they, as long as they don't go over that price of seventy, one-hundred-seventy-three thousand, six-hundred-seventy-two dollars and some cents, that'd give them leeway to possibly purchase some used attachments.
So this one, we're reconsidering six I, do we need to pull it, or can we just?
I think it's the same either way. I think you can reconsider six I, vote on it separately.
So it needs to be set, because, so we just-
You don't want to, you don't want to have to re-vote on the whole rest of the agenda, the consent agenda. So, he's just reconsidering six I.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure of. Okay.
And my intent is to give Public Works a little more flexibility, if they, if they can find a little better bang for the buck. Still, I still support buying a skid steer and all attachments.
Haven't we asked them to do that the last three years, though, when they're shopping around for stuff?
They go to Sourcewell, and it's supposed to be a great deal, but I'm going, something's supposed to be such a damn great deal. Now, may, and I don't think Case attachments are that much better than a Caterpillar attachment. Then, if it's a good deal, why are they charging us more?
So, we're just changing to allow them to u, to purchase a used item in your motion?
A used or new, other new item, if they so desire, or they can go ahead and-
Well, the problem with the other new item is that Sourcewell is a contract.
I understand.
Other new, so they either are used or Sourcewell.
Correct. Used or, used or new, a different brand, or through Sourcewell.
Can't do, because you gotta have, new, you have to have-
They'll just have to make sure they comply with the purchasing-
Right, because it's-
So if-
Because then you have to go off for bidding.
No, I don't think so.
If it's not on a contract, that's the whole thing for-
You have to competitively procure most purchases, unless there's exceptions, but-
We, we changed that.
I think you're just, the board today is just authorizing that flexibility. Whatever they ultimately decide do, will have to be consistent with the purchasing.
Okay.
Didn't we change that to where they can get three, three quotes or something like that, under items so many dollars? We should change it recently, didn't we?
We did change it. I don't know exactly how it will apply to this purchase, but-
And if it doesn't work out, fine. I'm just kind of, I'm having some heartburn. Where Sourcewell's supposed to be such a great deal, and it's higher than what you can buy something brand-new for. And so I, I, I'm, I'm kind of saying, what the hell? That's all.
Okay, so we're just adding on options?
Yeah.
You're authorizing additional alternatives, but that they have to still be consistent with the purchasing policy.
And under, under the, the major contract. Okay. So is that your motion?
Public comment.
Public comment. Any public comment? Come on, you gotta speak up sometime. You've been visiting us for, for a month now.
That's my motion, then.
Anybody on Zoom?
Not at this time.
Okay, that's, and then you said that's your motion?
Yep.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Opposed? Okay. Four-one.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to talk to Pat's wife and see if she's getting some ice cream. She's being grumpy down there.
Okay.
Contracts are contrary, can't nitpick it.
Okay, we're, this meeting is adjourned until Tuesday, October seventh. At nine AM, closed session begins at eight-thirty. Thank you very much.